I stayed in the public office for one and then used that as a place where I saw just the bicycle promenade place was fantastic. Never did that. And then I flew back, and then I flew back to, they were staying low because he had that other. And then we drove to Tontasket, which is a short beach.
Yeah, yeah.
We just stayed in this old hotel.
All right, I'll call this meeting back to order. Okay, first, we have our, the first public hearing on the city manager search process.
We need the consent agenda.
Missed the whole section. So Ms. Rice, could you please read the consent agenda?
Item A, minutes for July 16th, July 16th and August 6th. Item B, appropriation, additional funding for Medicaid expansion, $168,658, second of two readings. Item C, appropriation, additional funding for Department of Social Services View Program, $12,512, second of two readings. Item D, appropriation, strategic energy initiatives, $367,698.50, second of two readings. Item E, appropriation Charlottesville Admiral Adult Drug Treatment Court Grant Award, $205,000, first of two readings. Item F, appropriation, Office of Emergency Medical Services Rescue Squad Assistance Fund Grant, $499,703.55, first of two readings. Item G, appropriation supplemental local emergency management performance grant fire department, $13,143.29, first of two readings. Item H, appropriation check and connect student engagement continuation grant, $137,000, first of two readings. Item I, appropriation Virginia Juvenile Community Crime Control Act Grant, $452,704, first of two readings. Item J, a resolution, Black Business Expo funding request, $2,000, first of one reading. Item K, a resolution, supportive ratification by Virginia of the Equal Rights Amendment to the United States Constitution, first of one reading. Item L, an ordinance, quick claim gass easement in Cascadia subdivision to VDOT, first of two readings. And item M, an ordinance, quick claim gass easement in Estes Park subdivision to VDOT, first of two readings.
Is there a motion?
Move past the consent agenda?
Second.
I'd like to make just a quick comment, just one small part of it, just to call the public's attention to the one about Medicaid expansion. This is really significant. Sometimes these matters get lost in the shuffle in the consent agendas, but to everybody who worked really hard on any kind of political campaign that had an impact, or any advocacy on Medicaid being expanded at long last in Virginia, you see the stakes of that in our city. So our city has under 50,000 people and according to this, 8,228 individuals received Medicaid through the Charlottesville Department of Social Services in fiscal year 2017. And I was on that board before Mayor Walker took my position, or moved in that slot. It is anticipated that an additional 2,100 city residents will be eligible with Medicaid expansion. I mean, this really matters for people in our community. It is hugely impactful. These people struggle because they fall into this gap that Virginia had that was really cruel, because you could make just enough money to not be eligible, but you had no health care and you were completely vulnerable and your family was completely vulnerable. And if you got sick, you were not only sick, but you were going to be full of fear. And at long last, this was addressed and it's going to impact over 2,000 people in our city. And I just think everybody should be applauded for making this happen, because it took a ton of work. And you see the stakes right here in a little city. So just wanted to call that out.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? All right, please vote. All right, and it carries five to one, I mean, five to zero. All right, and so we have our first public hearing. It's on the city manager search process. And Mr. Murphy will present. Did you not, did you know?
I'd be happy to. I believe that this process is primarily run by the council and your chief of staff. But I believe that the purpose this evening is simply to solicit feedback from the public about the process. You know, it's my understanding that council intends to hire a search firm, but the first step is to craft an appropriate job description for the candidate that you would like to be attracted to the position. You have in your materials the job description that was posted in 2009, when Gary O'Connell was leaving his post and eventually Mr. Jones was hired. So I believe that there will be many steps along the way where you'll want to encourage community engagement, whether that be in the interview process, or community forums, or other ways that they may engage finalists. But the first step is to figure out how the public can give you input about the position description, and you post that out. And so you're taking public comment on that tonight.
All right.
We'll have a chance to talk after that. I'll wait till the public comments.
Okay. So the first individual, Peggy Van Yerres.
Thank you. Peggy Van Yerres, 1700 Chesapeake Street. Thank you, Mayor Walker, and all council members, and Mr. Murphy. I'm just going to talk about three issues. I hope I can blend them all together for you. First, I want to talk about the process of hiring directly a city manager. And I'd like to tell you a little story. Many years ago, I was on the school board doing a turbolift time in this community that, similar to what we've had this last year. The community had lost faith in us as a school board, and we had to hire then another superintendent. So these are some of the things we did, and whether they help you or not, but I just wanted to let you know. First of all, we slowed the process down. We hired a competent interim superintendent, just like you've hired Mr. Murphy. So that gave us time. We didn't rush into anything. The second thing we did is we composed an advisory committee of people representing the city schools, the city staff, businesses, community organizations, and others, to be the touchstone for us throughout the process. They worked with us first with our search firm and our board to develop a really competent process that would engage the community as much as possible. They were our touchstone when we interviewed people. Of course, we made the final decision, but they would give us feedback of what they thought. The second thing we did is we trusted our search firm, but we wanted to verify. And so we elected two members of our school board to, when we had our finalists, to go to the community where these finalists were and stay there for two or three days, really doing a complete interview with all kinds of people to find out who these people were. So I think, and we seemed to be successful, we gained the trust of the community, and so that helped. The second thing I wanted to talk about is, there's been a lot of talk about the role of the city manager and the mayor. To me, you need both a strong mayor and a strong city manager. The city manager, of course, is trained and educated, has experience of running a large organization. The mayor has had experience working in the community, representing the community, and together, they should be able to work together, representing these two groups. So they both should be strong. But I think it's very important for you to decide what is going to be the role, because I think it'll be very hard to hire an applicant, find applicants unless they know exactly what their job description is. And the third thing, and this is probably one of the most important, is that we need to do more to unite this community after this tough year we've had. And if I could just take you on a small walk downtown and on West Main Street and across a bridge, it's called the Drury Brown Memorial Bridge. And there are 37 people on that bridge, and they're called the Bridge Builders. And these are people who lived during Drury Brown's time, and they worked to heal this community, particularly when we had tough problems. To just give you a few examples, of course, I have to mention my father-in-law, Mitch Van Yerres. Criminal justice, they worked to reform that. Mitch and Drury and Grace Tinsley worked for five years to establish the first public defender's office in this community, and it's been going on for 20 years or 30 years. In education, Mary Ann Edwood, Mary Ann Elwood, Alicia Lugo, Teresa Price, Teresa Walker Price. Mary Ann Elwood, during massive resistance, she had preschools and kindergartens for disadvantaged kids in the basement of churches and homes, and she started the Book Buddies. Alicia Lugo served for a long time on the school board, and Teresa Walker Price has worked at Clark as a librarian and a teacher and has gotten volunteers there. So these people work together to improve education for everyone in the community. Civil rights, Paul Gaston, professor at UVA, started the African-American Studies Program and worked on civil rights issue with Eugene Williams and Reverend Henry Mitchell. So these people all work together, black and white people working together, to solve the problems in Charlottesville. And I think, I know we can do that again. It just takes commitment on both parts. So just to summarize, slow down, possibly have an advisory committee to plan a comprehensive process that engages the community, and do it in the spirit of Drury Brown. There was probably nobody, and I just read this morning that Drury Brown's father was lynched when he was three years old, but there was nobody that was more optimistic than Drury Brown. If you knew him, you might not agree with him, the same thing they said about Mitch Van Yerres, but you dag on, could not help but like him. And he was so optimistic about overcoming any problem that Charlottesville had. So I think if we move forward in that spirit, we can solve anything. So thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, I just have a quick question for Ms. Van Yerres. Yeah, Ms. Van Yerres, I just want to make sure in your second point, when you talked about, I guess it was school board members that went and visited communities, were they visiting the communities of the superintendent candidates, or were they?
No.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
All right. I'm Don Gathers.
Good evening again, everyone. I'll just be really brief. If the community yearns for anything, it's transparency and inclusivity. So it's very important that as much as possible, as much as the privacy laws allow, that this process remains open and available to the public. And if that means going out into the communities and finding out exactly what it is that people want or are looking for in the next city manager. I think that's an important step to take. And as the young lady just said, we have an opportunity where we don't have to rush. Mike is, yeah, I said young. Mike is, he's very competent and capable. He's been in the office for a while. He knows what's necessary and required. We don't have to push ourselves to rush through this. So as much as possible, let's be open, let's avoid any more black eyes. Let's avoid any backroom, backwards, backdoor deals. Let's just put everything out on the table, let the community and the citizens know what's going on, as much, again, as much as the law will allow for that information to be distributed. And let's, again, put transparency forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark. Mark.
I know you're not that used to seeing me here, because it's been a long time since I've been coming here, since I've been coming here, but it's Cabot, by the way. The most important thing to me is transparency. I think the next city manager needs to truly believe in transparency. Another thing I believe that they need to have is that they get, believe in making sure that the public is given sufficient notices on matters that are going to be coming before the boards, public hearings, council. There's been a continuous problem over years with short notices on matters that are coming up. I'll give example of one fairly recently, in fact, you probably will be looking at it shortly, because I understand it's going to be coming before with council. But there's plans right now to redo the streets as far as Fifth Street, Preston, and McIntyre. I'm sorry, I shouldn't really say Preston, but Fifth Street, McIntyre, and... What's the last one?
Ridge.
Ridge. And the public really was given very little notice about this coming up. The first time, we got six days' notice that this was coming up on the public hearing. Second time, again, six days' notice. The first time, I actually said something to some of the people there that we only were given six days' notice. Then again, they turned around and did it again. So the third one's coming up. I'm kind of wondering, how much notice are we going to be given that this meeting is coming up before council? And what will be the information going out to neighborhoods that are being affected especially, and such an important artery really affects the whole city? What kind of notice is going to be going out to everybody, letting them know that this is coming up and going to be on the schedule? One of the big aspects of this is there's talk about putting a roundabout and an interchange. So people need to know about this, and we need to make sure that we get word out on matters of this nature as well as others. I also think that the neighborhood leaders should have an interview process with the final candidates. This has been done in the past, and gives some feedback from the neighborhoods as to the interview process. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. I'm Walt Heinecke.
Hi, Walt Heinecke, I live on Amherst Street. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you about this process tonight. I just want to say that I thought the politics around the interim city manager process were really disturbing and really problematic for me. It brought up a lot of thoughts that I've had about where we're going after August 11th and 12th last year and this year. I think, you know, after the last election, one of you brought a pretty new vision of transformation, of transformative change to this community and to this council. It's a vision that's based on transparency, it's a vision that's based on challenging institutional racism, challenging structural racism in this town. And I guess I just want to say, you know, at this point, I think we need to be supporting that vision and not playing backroom politics to undermine that vision. And I really hope, and it's almost like a plea, to please put those politics aside and think about what's best for this community in terms of moving ahead. You know, the same, sometimes you have to do the morally right thing than the procedurally right thing. And I think that happened recently, and it happened on August 11th, 2017. We had the opportunity to do the morally correct thing, but we didn't. We did the technical and legal thing, and you saw what happened. So sometimes we have to make moral decisions rather than technical decisions. Now, specific to the city manager position, this position is incredibly important for making systemic change in this community. I would say that half of the problems that came up today in public comment, you could trace back to the city manager, and the choice of the city manager, and the politics that go on in City Hall. So really, thinking about systemic change through the hiring processes, I think where I want you to just open your mind to, because, listen, the entire country is watching us right now. You know it, we're in movies, we're on TV, we're everywhere. They're watching for us to make the right decisions about how to make that transformative change, how to make systemic change in this city, and how to uproot institutional racism and systemic racism in this, as an example for the rest of the country, and really the rest of the world. So I'm really hoping that you're starting to think about this process that way. In terms of process, I want to encourage you to make this process more transparent than you ever have done before. Forget that position description that you, from four or five or 10 years ago. We have a whole new ballgame going on right now, right? I want to encourage you to create more and more opportunities for comment, engagement, and participation and decision-making by the public. Lastly, characteristics for this new city manager. I want you to change the position description to include things like "a demonstrated commitment to equity, justice, and fairness," asking how the person would work with the mayor and the council to share the power of a strong city manager, which has been problematic in this city for decades. How will they engage the public in a manner not yet experienced in Charlottesville in terms of, in terms of creating that vision and fulfilling that vision of equity, transformation, and ending institutional and systemic racism in this town? So I encourage you to think about this process in those terms. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. I'm Louis Schultz.
My name is Louis Schultz, I live at 1809 East Market Street. Before we get into a discussion of what we want in the next city manager, there are a lot of questions still to be answered about the last one. Virginia Code Section 15.2-1503 says "all appointments of officers and hiring of other employees by locality shall be without definite term unless for temporary services not to exceed one year." Council and the city attorney's office are obviously aware of that law, since it was cited in Section 2B of Mike Murphy's contract, so there's a lot of explaining to do regarding what actually happened legally on July 2nd, when council voted not to renew Maurice Jones' employment contract, which was purportedly due to expire in December at the end of a multi-year definite term. There are some serious problems with that vote, since by law, a law that is known to everyone involved, including Mr. Jones himself, his contract can't legally be for a definite term and therefore can't require renewal. Since council obviously agrees that Section 15.2-1503 prohibits a contract to be for a definite term of more than a year, maybe it wants to take the position that Mr. Jones' contract was never actually valid, because it was always in conflict with state law. That makes sense, since Virginia Code Section 1-248 says "any ordinance resolution by law, rule, regulation, or order of any governing body shall not be inconsistent with the laws of the Commonwealth." Under that theory, since Jones' contract refers to its prohibited definite term no less than nine times, no resolution of council to approve the signing of Mr. Jones' contract was ever actually legal, and the city never had a contract with Jones. That was my belief when I first informed Wes Bellamy of problems with Jones' contract way back in December of 2015. The announcement of a generous severance package at the last meeting says otherwise. Somehow council has become so completely confused by this whole process that they seem to think that the contract is valid in the parts that give Mr. Jones a substantial payout to leave quietly, but not valid in the part that says he is city manager until December 6th, 2018. There was some talk of council and Mr. Jones agreeing to an earlier end to his contract, but I can't find any record of council having approved an earlier end to, in a vote at a public meeting. If council didn't legally agree to an early end to Mr. Jones' employment, it appears he simply walked away from a job he has legal duty to perform for another four months and is not entitled to any severance. To add to the confusion, Mr. Jones' announced severance package includes having over $80,000 in unpaid interest-free loans from the city forgiven. Even accepting the questionable contract as valid, Jones would only be entitled to that if he were fired without cause. Council never did that. Council's July 2nd vote was not to renew, an entirely different thing, which would not trigger that payout. The former city attorney and the recent acting city attorney and staff have so badly botched everything about this process that it's not at all clear who the city manager actually is. Even if it's not Maurice Jones, there are problems with Mike Murphy's contract as approved by council two weeks ago, particularly the parts that were originally kept secret. Section 5E of the city's charter says that "the city manager shall serve at the pleasure of council," that means on an at-will basis. In 2016, Virginia Supreme Court wrote in its Johnson versus William E. Wood's decision that imposing a requirement of reasonable advanced notice is antithetical to the flexibility that lies at the heart of the at-will doctrine and would undermine the indefinite duration element of at-will employment. Mr. Murphy's contract imposes a requirement of advanced notice for termination, and so appears to not comply with the charter.
All right, thank you. Is there a comment?
Are we done?
No, we have one more. Olivia Patton.
Olivia Patton, city resident. I wrote this down to make sure everything was correct. On July 23rd, oops, on July 23rd, I submitted a FOIA request for all email communications and text messages between the city councilors regarding the interim city manager hiring process from May 23rd to present. I submitted this FOIA request because the city council couldn't seem to get their story straight over the ZIMP process, whose major qualification was that he had a multiracial wife, and I figured that there was certainly more worth delving into than that catastrophe. On July 26th, I received an email from Brian Wheeler stating, quote, "We have determined that it is not practically possible to provide the requested records or to determine whether they are available within the five workday period. In accordance with Virginia Code Section 2.2-3704B4, we are exercising our right to extend the response due date for an additional seven business days or until August 7th, 2018. We appreciate your patience." Brian failed to mention that the next second sentence of that section also says that such an extension should, quote, "specify the conditions that make irresponsible impossible." On July 27th, I responded to Brian, "Could you let me know the reason why it is not practically possible to meet this in time? Do you expect to take the entirety of the extension to fulfill it?" No response was given. On August 6th, Brian let me know, quote, "The city attorney's office is wrapping up the collection of all the records for you. Should have an update tomorrow," end quote. I followed up pretty much every other day with Brian asking where the FOIA request is. I contacted our city attorney's office, and John Blair, who was hired three weeks after my request, responded, saying he could get it back to me by next Monday or Tuesday, as if no one had been working on it up to this point. While I hate sounding like a conspiracy theorist, it seems likely at this point that the city has manipulated its fulfillment of the request in order to not release the information for conversations such as this public hearing. In tonight's agenda, the city manager's search process reports to desire community involvement in this process. If this process has taught me anything, it's that I cannot expect timely transparency from our city staff and can't expect city councilors to do shady things and bicker over the facts of the matter. How can we expect the process, how can we expect this process to be as open as possible, and what policies not necessarily based in the law are holding us back from that?
I mean, I can only just speak, I provided all my input on August 5th.
It seems like it's been with the city attorney's office since August 6th.
There's a number of people who have to participate for this to be done.
I mean, that's what Brian said, that the records were with the city's attorney's office on August 6th.
I did reply, I had a message today from Ms. Patton. I was provided this FOIA request and the documents on Friday, August 17th. As the council is probably aware, there are voluminous amounts of documents. I did pledge to Ms. Patton, we will have a response to her by next Monday.
I do not think that Mr. Blair is the problem here. I think that it's kind of an egregious mistake of the city staff that it wasn't fulfilled even before he was hired. That was the point I was bringing.
I think that it should have been fulfilled by now, but, so, Monday. So I do have a question about, I don't even know if it matters now, but the fire without cause versus not renewing, was that clear? That Ms. Louis Schultz just brought up the...
It's Section 17 of Maurice Jones' employment contract, I believe it's 17.
Yes. So I'm just, if...
You can certainly look into that, and your specific inquiry is concerning firing without cause?
I said exactly what I meant, which was nothing like that.
Okay.
No, no, I mean, well, first of all, there was never a legal contract in the first place, because it's specifically prohibited by Virginia Code that a multi-year contract come to a specific term. So what council did was voted to not renew a contract that can't legally ever need to be renewed. The announced payout was the payout that Jones would get, which would be a year's salary plus the forgiveness of his loan if he was fired without cause. Council never voted to fire him without cause. On June 2nd, they voted to ratify their decision not to renew the contract, but the announcement made at the last meeting was that Jones would have $80,000 of what was already an interest-free loan forgiven, which only is triggered in the event that he's fired without cause, which has not happened.
Okay. All right. I'll take a look into that for you.
You've inherited quite a mess, you will be, you really have.
We'll certainly look into that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Blair, because as I recall with the contract, the city manager's contract, the loan forgiveness was something that was granted if there was no firing. Okay, so that does need to be clarified to the public.
Okay. Take a look at the contract and the actions taken on July 2nd, as well as Mr. Schultz's comments about firing without cause, and how that would relate compared to the July 2nd ratification.
Well, my concern is also that he apparently is still city manager, unless he walk away from his contract.
No, we definitely, Ms. Rice, we voted on that resolution, correct? And what was the date?
Do you remember the second, I look the same date that you, I mean, you voted on the letter affirming that he was not renewing the contract.
But we all...
There's been no public vote, and there's certainly not any record that I can find online where council has, the contract, if you take it at face value, extends to December 6th, 2018. I don't take it at face value, but if you take it at face value, as council did when they voted not to renew it, there's a contract in place until December 6th, 2018.
Okay. So Ms. Rice is going to get that information? Okay.
There's quite a mess here.
All right, thanks. All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak about the city manager?
Just a real quick interruption to this thrilling conversation. Activists in Chapel Hill have just pulled down the Silent Sam statue. So whoever you select as our next city manager, I hope they have the spine and the moral conviction to tear ours down, because if you don't, we will. They're chanting right now, Durham first, then Chapel Hill, next stop, Charlottesville.
Thank you.
You know Maurice Jones is the city manager.
Isn't that something? You can't go to...
Maurice is good.
All right.
Maurice is their city manager.
All right, is any...
I'm relieved.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the public hearing? City manager process? All right, closing the public hearing? Any comments?
I just have, I have one request to the public, which is, I haven't talked to my colleagues about this idea, and just as well, I thought that the idea of taking time and doing this right, especially with Mr. Murphy in the seat, was very well taken for me. I was with a friend who's an elected official in Maryland. Maryland elects their city managers, their county executives. It's a different model, but in this discussion we're having, I would be very curious to hear from people in the community who might have thoughts about that practice, and what would they, I imagine it's not allowed under Dillon's rule, but given the thinking that we're doing about the form of government we have, and given the power that the city manager has, what if they were directly elected, as they do in some other states? What would that look like, and how would that fit into what we've seen as opposed to all the machinations we've been talking about with the different balance between the elected officials? What if the city manager were elected? And then what would the relationship be like with the elected body? That's a whole other question, but I just, there's a lot of very thoughtful people in this community who've watched city managers for a long time, and I personally would be very interested in hearing from people, any thoughts about that. So I want to put that request out while we have a meeting going on.
Well, I think that might limit us to just individuals who live... Well, I think that might limit us to just individuals who live in Charlottesville to be, for people to choose to be elected from, and I really do think that we need, you know, outside, people from outside the area in this position, so that's my only comment.
And I just know that we're going on ten o'clock, and I just think it's important that we really allocate appropriate time at some point in the near future to just, you know, align as a body on the points and the level and the type of involvement from their communities. I certainly feel like we all agree we want to have that throughout the process. But also in regards to the transparency, it's going to be important that we all kind of come to an agreement on what that's going to look like as well, because I can hear from the public, they want to see everything all the way along the way, but we also have to balance that impact that will have on our recruiting pool if we don't redact names or certain information. I just think it's important that we all just come to an agreement on that, because I think if we don't have those things as a starting point, then we're hurting the whole process. I think that there's just some ground rules that we're going to have to kind of really establish for ourselves and what our expectations are, both from the community and from the candidates and what we're going to expect with them. I think the more information we can provide to candidates about what to expect, whether it's their contracts are going to be completely public or that their names are going to be public immediately upon applying, I think those are just important considerations to be had, and I just hope that we can really dig at that sooner versus later before we get too far along the process.
Well, Mayor Walker, I just, again, how do we get this group of five people together to come to an agreement on all these items, the process, as well as the attributes of the city manager that some have articulated tonight? And is that going to be something that we're going to be walked through and with our consultants helping us do the search? I think that's where we're going to start getting the details. So I just want to make sure that, like, we can't really craft that here tonight. We're getting input. I really did appreciate Ms. Vanyere's three points, and that the idea of a community steering committee that was working constantly and helping to decide every step of the way is very intriguing to me. I don't know other places that have done that. And I certainly understand the importance of having a change agent who is the city manager, not someone who is maintaining the status quo that they find, but someone who is understanding what our values are. We articulate our values that we hear from the community, but then they are given the rein to change the organizational structure and so that we get the results that we want in a timely way. So I do think that those are some, getting some principles out there of both what we want the process, the search process to look like, the engagement process to look like, and then some principles of the person that we're looking for to get the outcomes we want.
Yeah. And I think, you know, we already have scheduled, well, in the process of being scheduled, dinners at the, you know, at low-income neighborhoods where to make sure that we're, you know, going out there to get their, those families' perspectives, because we don't, you know, they are not usually at a meeting if we just have a meeting at Carver-Jefferson School, so we're going to them. And we also have luncheons and the process of being scheduled for city staff, because it's very important to make sure that staff can weigh in on what they would like to see too, and I hope that any, for me, any time, you know, along the way that we need to take a step back and make sure that we are hearing, that we, even if those groups of people don't come to us, that we're going out, you know, to them, whoever they may be. And there are people who are very vocal in the community, we've seen it. If there is a cause that they are very passionate about, they show up, and they show up in large numbers. I mean, tonight with the drive-throughs, we're going to hear about, but I think it's very important that we get that kind of input, even if we have to go out to get it. And so that's the plan, just starting, so hopefully, and that's just the beginning, you know, to get feedback on what this process should look like. All right. Any other comments? So we're going to close the public hearing. So the next public hearing is the easement to Virginia Power at McIntyre Park and Parks and Rec, Director of Parks and Recreation. Oh, well, nope.
Actually, it's me. It's Doug Inan, Parks Division Manager. Good evening. The item before you is a result of the reconfiguration and upgrading of the electrical service on the south end of East McIntyre Park, which will accommodate current and all future development. It is the addition of one pole outside of the current easement area. It is the pole that takes the service from aerial to ground. From that point on, it is underground. It is a thirty-by-thirty-foot area, and there's no cost to anybody for the easement or the new upgraded service. And that is it.
Okay. Is there anyone signed up to speak? No?
I see no one, but I will pass this on.
Is there anyone that would like to speak on this? No? All right, so close, public comment period. Any questions from the council?
I'd just like to make a motion. I move that council pass an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of an easement to Dominion Energy Virginia to permit electrical facilities on and across city property McIntyre Park to serve the McIntyre Skate Park.
Second?
Second.
All right. Please vote.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, it's on the second page, page. No, it's fine. Public hearing, the next is to release a portion of the sewer easement at Belmont Station Subdivision, first of two readings.
Hi, I'm Lauren Hill Durant. I'm the Director of Utilities. Mayor and councilors, in 1964, the city was granted an easement to install sanitary sewer facilities near Carlton Avenue and Randolph Avenue. Now the property is owned by Belmont Station, and the subdivision plat calls out that existing sewer lines are in conflict with the building footprints. Thus, the sewer line has to be relocated. This relocation was completed by the developer. Therefore, certain portions of the 1964 sewer easement are no longer needed. A public hearing is required by law to give the public an opportunity to comment on the proposed conveyance of a property at interest. Staff is recommending that council approve the ordinance of abandoning portions of the 1964 sewer easement within Belmont Station, and I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Would like to open the public hearing? It's here. So there's no one signed up? Is there anyone here that would like to speak? No? All right. Any questions or comments from council?
I can make a motion. We adapt an ordinance authorizing the release of a portion of sanitary sewer easement granted to the city across the property near Carlton Avenue and Randolph Avenue, the Belmont Station subdivision.
Second.
All right, any other questions?
This is the first no vote. But it's been moved to seconding.
We could withdraw.
Oh, so we don't even make a second?
Right, you would withdraw at this point, as this is not up for vote tonight.
So you don't make a motion, is what you're saying?
Right, it would be a withdrawal, withdraw the motion.
Oh, okay.
Get us right, Mr. Blair.
Yeah, and just, it's just interesting, because we've been doing the moving and the seconding, but not voting.
Okay.
When we have a first reading.
Okay. Well, I think...
I just want, yeah, please help me out, because I keep calling the votes.
I think the second, the second reading is when the actual action would take place.
So we would just have this up to discussion and stop?
Right.
Okay.
So, Mr. Blair, I just want to clarify, it's been the practice of the council to do the first and second, and then to move these items that have been in public hearings, and there was no comment onto the consent agenda.
Correct.
And so, how would they do that if...
Well, if they're on the consent agenda at the next meeting...
They'll just move in second, the full agenda.
For the full consent agenda, it would serve as their vote on every item within that consent agenda.
Yes, so...
It makes sense to me, because...
It'd be a lot less dramatic.
Yes.
So we just, we just don't even talk? We just...
No, we talked through it, but I think we stopped at discussion.
Like, what if council didn't want to get to it?
Well, I believe the city code, if I can pull it up for a minute, talks about Section two, let's see here, Chapter two.
Mr. Blair, you know, the council could still, after a public hearing, have any amount of comment at the first hearing, and it would be clear at that time whether perhaps they were not in a place where they could put this on the consent agenda, right?
Correct. Correct. And just to let you know, Section two dash ninety-seven is your procedure for enacting general ordinances and states, "No general ordinance shall be passed by the city council on the same day of its introduction, nor shall any such ordinance be valid unless at least three days intervene between its introduction and passage." So in effect, you hold your public hearing, you can take your comment, deliberate on it as you see fit, and then it would be on the consent agenda for the next meeting, and if you chose to pass the consent agenda, the item would be passed at that time. There is another provision, and it says, "Provided that by four-fifths vote of the city council, a general ordinance may be passed on the same date of its introduction and be valid."
Yeah, we've definitely done that.
And that's at the council's discretion if you wanted to invoke that provision tonight, but if not, it will be on your next consent agenda. You've held your public hearing tonight, and then if any council member wanted to pull it and talk about it...
All it really is, is an introduction and public hearing. It's not actually a first reading.
It's not really a first reading.
Right, it's not really a first reading.
New cop in town.
So we don't, so we don't even need first and second readings?
Well, what you, what I would say about the first and second reading is this, you do need to have a public hearing for any ordinance before it's passed. So the first, and since there is this three-day provision in the city code, you would hold your public hearing tonight again, and then you have to have that three-day intervention, so I assume that's why everything is then on the consent agenda at the next meeting. And again, as part of the consent agenda, that if there's a motion to pass the consent agenda and it's passed by the council, that serves as enactment of the ordinance.
So I just want, so we would call it an introduction and final reading instead of a first and second reading, to be clear?
I think that's fair. But I can, I can talk to the clerk about how, I mean, you know, and if you want to keep it as first and second reading, that's fine as well.
Thank you.
All right. So council discussion, we're...
We're done with that one.
All right. So, thank you.
Do you want to announce the second one?
She's the next one. I'm the next one, too. It's a release of a sewer easement for the Beta Apartments on Seventeenth Street Northwest.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Mayor and councilors, in 1994, the city was granted an easement and right-of-way for installation of a sanitary sewer line across property on Seventeenth Street Northwest, known as Beta Apartments. The property is being redeveloped, and new buildings are being built that are in conflict with the existing sewer line, so the developer has installed a new sewer line. The existing 1994 easement is no longer needed and can be released. A public hearing was required by law to give the public an opportunity to comment on the proposed conveyance of a city property interest. Staff recommends council approve the ordinance to abandon the 1994 sewer easement located at Seventeenth Street Northwest. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Thank you. Any questions from council? All right, so I will open the public hearing. We have one person signed up, Donna Deloria.
Yes, I'm Donna Deloria with Paint and Hub, and it's on behalf of the owner, and I don't need to add anything to the staff report, I'm just here to ask some ready questions.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, so closing the public comment. And any clarifying questions from council? All right, this is pretty straightforward. Okay. All right, next.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Just moves forward.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Yes. Approving policy to conduct electronic meetings, first of one reading, and Mr. Blair will present.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Before you tonight is a written policy that would allow each of you to participate in meetings by electronic means. I wanted to sort of hit the highlights of this policy and then take questions from you as you deem fit. In effect, what this policy does is that, first, council members, if they wish to participate, either call in, and the General Assembly's language doesn't disallow something like Skype or video participation as well, if the technology is available, but whether it's calling in or using something like Skype or FaceTime, the member would need to notify the mayor as well as the clerk of council about their intention to participate via electronic means. They would need to state to the mayor and the chief of staff or council, number one, is it a personal matter, or two, is it a physical disability or illness that is, in fact, causing their absence from the meeting? If it is a personal matter, and I, we'll get to the policy in a second, that exemption is, or that permission is allowed, can be allowed by the council twice in one year for personal matters. The physical disability or the, if you were, or if there was illness, that per state code is unlimited. So let's say that Counselor Galvin calls Mayor Walker and Ms. Rice and states, "Hey, I've got an emergency tonight, can't make the council meeting, I'd like to participate via phone." At that point, based on the policy, the council would then assemble at the physical location here in City Hall, most likely. The mayor and Ms. Rice would bring the request to council. The nature of the personal matter specified or the illness would need to be considered, as well as the record must show where the counselor is actually participating from, the remote location. At that point, the council has to vote to, whether to allow or disallow that member to participate via electronic communication. The state law says that the application of your written policy has to be uniform and can't consider who the council member is or the vote that they're calling in about, or the matter they're calling in about. So in effect, I... So, in effect, again, to take this earlier, uh, scenario, Ms. Galvin calls Mayor Walker, calls Ms. Rice, says, "I've got an emergency with a family member. I'll be at home and I can't make the meeting tonight." City council would convene here. Mayor Walker and Ms. Rice would convey that information, and then the council would, in effect, vote whether to allow Counselor Galvin to participate that evening in the council meeting. Again, I, I did want to bring your attention to the policy itself. There was one change I noticed that needed to be made, and that is that, uh, the policy talks about, um, in section three, the last sentence states, "Each individual council member shall be limited each calendar year to participation by electronic means in two meetings." That only applies to personal matters. Again, if somebody had a disability or illness, the state code does permit more than two meetings per year. So I would, I would ask that, that if the council wants to consider enacting this tonight, that they consider amending that portion to make it clear that it's by personal ma, that two-meeting limitation per year is only for personal matters, that, again, disability or sickness, you may participate in more than two meetings in a year by electronic means. But I, I'm happy and welcoming any questions you have about this policy.
It applies to any open and closed meetings, then?
Correct.
So is, is there a way to, um, so if council votes, to vote to allow participation, those individuals would have to be in the physical location to allow the vote?
Correct. The quorum would have to be located here in City Hall or wherever your meeting is scheduled to take place.
So in a situation like the last, one of the recent situations that we had, where, um, I was out of town and Vice Mayor Hill was out of town, then, and we, I was at a conference, we, what would the conference count as?
That would be a personal matter.
Okay, even though it's official?
Right.
City, okay. And, um, my next question, is there a way to have, um, this, the vote have to have a majority of council, so the four-fifths requirement, or is that not?
Let me take a look at the state code.
Mayor Walker, you're just asking that when the meeting convenes, that four-fifths are there? I'm just trying to understand your question.
No, I'm trying to, um, m- make sure that if, because in the situation that, the last situation that we had, if, um, the three members that was present voted to have elect, uh, like, to allow one of us to participate, in that, uh, the emergency situation that was brought about, I think I would have liked for it to have been like a majority of council to need, to have called a meeting like that one. So I'm just trying to figure out if there are ways that we, it can be more of an agreement in all the different possible scenarios, which is different from the one that, um, was presented as the example.
I, I don't see anything that would prohibit you changing your written policy to require a vote, an affirmative vote of three members of council. I guess in your scenario, let's say, uh, Counselor Bellamy, Counselor Hill, and, uh, Mayor Walker here, and either or both, Counselor Signer and Counselor Galvin calls in, says, "I'd like to participate via electronic means." And, and in your scenario, let's say it's a two-one vote, you, you don't feel like that should be allowed?
Well, I'm asking at, um, the supermajority?
Right.
For the four-fifths vote, is that?
Right. Okay, so, so not only requiring three, but requiring four?
So, because that was what I was hearing, too, that we, we needed to have a four, four out of the five councils agree to let the person participate. Did I mishear that?
I think it was a quorum.
No, no, it was a quorum.
So it could be just three?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
And your question, Mayor Walker, is could you require that four members affirmatively vote to allow? I don't see anything in the state code that would prohibit the council from that.
Mr. Blair, what do you do then if you, it would have to spell out what would happen if you had only three?
And if it's physical, it couldn't even work if that case.
I think, well, in that case, here's how that would work. I think in the end, if, if you had just three members physically present and you had the four-fifths requirement in your written policy, in effect, the two other counselors could not participate. There wouldn't even need to be a vote, because you would have, in your rules, that four had to be physically present and vote.
That seems restrictive.
Yeah, well, my concern here is that it was an emergency meeting called and there wasn't an emergency.
Okay.
So I do have some concerns about this resolution.
So, but, but wouldn't it be a benefit that if there are only three counselors physically present, that those three counselors were then able to vote to allow the absent members to participate? That's what we're looking for.
No, I hear you. I'm just, uh, the situation that prompted this is stuck in my head, so I'm having a hard time moving beyond, um, a situation where the request for us to be in the same space to discuss this, um, that there, there was an effort to move around that.
Nothing, I mean, I think Ms. Galvin's point is this, this wouldn't change or address in any, that, that concern exists, so you could still have three members call a meeting when they, when they want, and under the rules. So this only would allow more people to be brought into it. You still can call emergency meetings if people are out of town, or, you know, depending on how the interpretation, I mean, in our, you know. So, but, but all that this does is it gives a process to allow the persons out of town to request to be included, which seems, you know. Um, I mean, this, this came up a lot during, last year, during August twelfth, because there were a bunch of vacations in that, um, including my counsel, and it was really, really, it was really difficult to not be able to communicate. And you just had to fly back to vote last week.
I had to fly back to vote last week.
Yeah, I mean, it would be from Massachusetts, and it would be really great to be able, in, in a very rigorous way, which this seems to have all kinds of protections in it, to be able to participate, and the, these people have all kinds of things happen.
Other than that, we just have to really work to schedule our, our lives so that, I mean, there was, there was, at times this summer, that there was only two counselors in, in the city at one time, so we couldn't even had a vote on anything. Now, that's another challenge, I think. But it, 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 that, that's the other way to go around this, is to make sure physically that there's always four couns, counselors, at least in the city at any one time, and that's challenging to do. And I think this, this is, has an appeal because it does allow for at least those counselors not physically in Charlotte to still participate in a meeting.
No, I get that. I mean, even the reports, for me, um, I had just got off the phone, you know, finished a conversation with Counselor Bellamy, but then it was reported that I was unavailable for the conference. I guess that is my, that's my concern. Like, how do we prevent, and I guess that's something that we need to, to work on, but, um, if you're saying that everyone would need to be notified that this meeting was happening, and I didn't know the meeting was happening, um, and I just talked to you, but I'm just, I still would have been able to be on a, on the phone, um, for this meeting.
Literally, I just hung up.
Yeah, so. I'm just concerned there.
Let me ask this. Um, in, in that scenario, when you were away, is, is your concern that, well, let me just, what, what is the specific concern on, on that? Is that more that there was an emergency meeting? Is that more, and, and you received notice quickly about that and you were out of town? Is that?
Yes, all of this happened within.
What, hour? An hour? Wow, okay. And, and you received notice of an emergency meeting within an hour?
Fifteen, yeah.
Okay, fifteen minutes.
And it was official bevote in the contract for, um, the interim city manager was signed during that process.
Okay. Well, again, I think this policy would, would have permitted, if there, and there were three council members, if I remember from media accounts, um, if there were three council members present, they could have then, in fact, voted to allow you to participate by phone. And you could have voted via phone pursuant to the policy.
But that's not, but that's not, well, so, I'm going to speak for myself.
Sure.
I was told that she couldn't participate because.
Because we didn't have this.
Because you need.
And it was the same problem with, with Counselor Hill, or Vice Mayor Hill. She could, she could only listen but couldn't vote because, because we didn't have this policy.
Because I was told she, there was no way for Mayor Walker to participate because she physically had to be there.
Because we didn't have this resolution.
But now, if we pass this resolution, she could be able to.
But I could have been listening.
Right, so that's another part. I was told that she had to physically be there.
Okay.
So can, so can counselors listen if they, if they've already met their two, if they've already met their two-meeting quota for the personal matters? Can they call in and listen to a closed session or a meeting without talking, speaking, or participating?
Actually, I think they can, um, and, and I will tell you why I think closed me, well, two scenarios. First, open meeting, just like anyone in this audience is, can listen to all the proceedings. You could certainly have a, a phone or, uh, Skype or FaceTime set up. Now, participate. Again, that, that's a different story, but if, if it's just simply listening, that's one thing. In closed session, um, that's attendance, um, of who is allowed in closed session is controlled by the council. You can allow somebody to, uh, in fact, phone in and talk. You know, let's say you had a closed-meeting item on, uh, I'm trying to think here, uh, real property acquisition. You could have someone call in if they couldn't make the meeting and say, "Here's what we're thinking." Now, the difference is this, since the state has passed this act, they're talking about participation. And what I think you could do is you can allow someone to listen, a council person to listen, even to closed session, but they couldn't speak or act in that, because the state is making this distinction about participation and saying that participation is limited to two meetings per year if you have this policy in, in place.
And let's just, I just want to be, this applies to closed sessions as well as open meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other? And all members of council would have to be notified? That it was, okay.
Yes.
And what is the, um, is that another, um, resolution but the amount of time? And what, what defines an emergency? Is that, uh?
Well, there, there are actually, uh, two provisions that sort of work there. There is the Freedom of Information Act, as well as, uh, Virginia Title fifteen point two. And, uh, Virginia Freedom of Information Act controls the notice for the meetings. And I will pull that up for you as, in terms of notice. And that's for the public, but as counselors, there's a provision in fifteen point two, and it is fourteen sixteen, I believe. Sorry, it's fourteen seventeen. It talks about your ability to call a special meeting. And then fourteen eighteen talks about how that is called. Special meetings are called by the mayor, or if requested by two or more members of the council. And the call goes to the clerk and specifies the matters to be considered at the meeting. Upon receipt of the call, the clerk, after consultation with the mayor, shall immediately notify each member of the body and the city or, or county or municipal attorney as appropriate, in writing, delivered in person or to their place of business or residence, um, or by electronic mail or facsimile, to attend such meeting at the time and place stated in the notice. You know, that's, that's sort of what the, the state code states about special meetings as to the notice provided. It says notice shall be provided immediately.
That ain't what, okay.
And the fifteen point two is?
And then, and then at the last sentence of that, the notice may be waived if all members of the governing body attend the special meeting or sign a waiver.
That's what happened at the curfew, emergency meeting. We called it immediately.
And that was both for you and the fifteen point two?
Right, that, that statute I just read was fifteen point two dash fourteen eighteen.
Okay.
But, uh, but this just covers all meetings we would do. We're just having a side discussion about one, and so I, just, so like, when I missed, you know, my flight was delayed the other day and I got here an hour late, whatever that meeting was. So I could have called in, I could have been like, hey, I'm going to be there half an hour. There could have been a quick vote at the beginning saying, "Council Signer is going to be on the speakerphone right here and then be on the phone and participate," you know, on the, in the taxi coming over here. That would be, things like that are now, would now be possible.
It could have if this policy had been in place.
If it's in place, okay.
Now, you know, I, I would say, I, I know you all have
Don't, don't amuse it.
A legislative agenda. You can certainly ask the state, but right now, the state code limits that particular exception to two meetings per year.
Right, understood, understood, yeah.
So you have to, to be cognizant of that, I think, all of you, that if you're calling in on a personal matter, you would need, in fact, to think about why I can do this twice in a year.
Yep.
Okay. All right, any other questions, comments? All right, um, is there a motion?
Move to pass this resolution regarding council member participation and council meeting by electronic means.
As amended, correct?
Correct.
In section three?
Section three.
To, um, which would read, "Each individual council member shall be limited each calendar year to participation by electronic means in two meetings for personal reasons and an unlimited number of meetings for disability."
Correct.
As amended.
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Oh, and vote?
You do vote tonight?
Yes.
Do you favor?
Carries five to zero.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have, um, the ordinance for restaurants drive-through windows and highway corridor, second of two readings. Next, we have the ordinance for restaurants drive-through windows and highway corridor, second of two readings.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilors. I think this, staff did present this particular ordinance to the city council before. Councilor filtered some questions to staff and the staff answered the questions and then council decided to move it forward and it was placed, I believe, on consent agenda. And then, when it was time to vote, I think it was pulled out and then postponed. So essentially, for tonight, I think council needs to make a decision, either you deny or you approve the request.
Mayor Walker, if I may, there are two people here, or three people here, that are willing, that stayed here all night and willing to make a comment about this particular zoning text amendment as Chip Boils with TJ PDC and Denise Bond and Rebecca Schmidt from the Health Department.
Yeah, well, we have the, did you have? I mean, we've heard, we have their, the information that's been.
At the time that this was tabled, it was brought to our attention by a clerk of council, to myself, Mr. Bellamy, Councilor Bellamy and Signer. Are there, is there additional information and presentation that you would like to bring tonight, to this night? And I, I offered and had talked to both Mr. Boils and reached out to the Health Department and they both were willing to come. So that, that was my understanding, that that was a request. And I, and I obliged, I took advantage of that request and asked these folks to come. So I thought that was within my purview and I thought that was something that my colleagues wanted because no one objected.
Yeah.
All right.
Sure.
Because it was, I believe, Mr. Counselor Bellamy that first brought this up to table it.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Chip Boils with the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission and also the Charlottesville-Albemarle MPO and a member of the Hydraulic Planning Advisory Panel. As part of the Hydraulic and 29 intersection planning project, the MPO was responsible for creating the advisory panel that worked one and a half years in developing a small area plan and a roadway transportation plan that was accepted unanimously by both the Charlottesville Planning Commission and the Albemarle County Planning Commission. And then was followed up with unanimous accept, acceptance by the Charlottesville City Council and the Albemarle County Board of Supervisors. I'm here tonight not to support or to oppose the drive-through request that's before you and especially at the Kmart site. But what I would like to offer is a review of the vision that the Hydraulic Planning Advisory Panel provided in its small area plan. That vision is, and I quote, "The hydraulic small area plan promotes a strong sense of place, a vibrant, dynamic economy and an equitable and environmentally sustainable community connected by an efficient multimodal transportation network that accommodates local and regional traffic needs." First and foremost of the planning process was to improve vehicular traffic through the intersection of Hydraulic and 29. This is the worst performing intersection in the VDOT Culpeper District with a current level of service of failing. The second major vision was to create better connectivity across Route 29 from east to west. US 29 is a major barrier for residents and travelers to cross safely and efficiently. Applications for funding went in for both of these projects on August 8th to the state for future funding. The Small Area Plan furthered a vision of one-stop destinations by recommending the mixed use of land uses. Living, working and shopping uses would create more of a downtown-type environment where people would spend more time walking or biking than driving. The mixed land use would also create more opportunities for housing at all income ranges. The Hydraulic Planning area is approximately 600 evenly split acres between the city of Charlottesville and Albemarle County. Within these 600 acres, over 100 acres of paved surface parking exists. One-six is surface lots. This area is equivalent to the area needed to develop 1,000 units of multifamily housing. Zoning policy changes by both local governments could reduce parking requirements and allow mixed-use developments, creating more developable land for this much-needed housing. This area was identified as ideal for higher-density, mixed-use development because of its proximity to major roadways, public transit, jobs and more affordable housing. The long-range transportation projects were designed to accommodate this type of growth and move away from the vehicular-centric developments found further north along Route 29. Increased car-centric development within this planning area could push the neighborhood mixed-use development potential further into the long-range future. This area, according to the plan, would accommodate higher-density, mid-level buildings to create opportunities for increased commercial and residential use. The higher density of people and non-vehicular activity would create more of an activity hub and destination, much like a downtown environment. Each quadrant around the intersection would have its own identity and destination attraction with the combined area sharing a major attraction point. This plan, the Small Area Plan, was specific in regarding planned project areas of mixed-use commercial, such as the old Kmart site. The plan quotes, again, I quote, "The opportunity is to have new buildings that address hydraulic road with an urban frontage, an enhanced public realm, reduced surface parking and exposure to the public streets, enhance landscaping and create a smaller block structure." I feel strongly that the year-and-a-half-long planning process and multiple citizen engagement meetings created a very realistic future development plan for the entire hydraulic area. Not only one that will improve traffic flow in the corridor, but one will help both the city and county meet its commercial and especially immediate housing needs. Very few places in the county offer this opportunity and even fewer in the city. I ask that you review and consider closely the vision set forth by the Hydraulic Small Area Plan when you make any land use changes to this corridor. And I certainly hope Albemarle County does the same.
Was, was this the, did we have a, a meeting about, was this where the three options were presented? And, so the city, besides the land where Mickey Drive is at, the city didn't own any of the other lands surrounding, cause this plan went across the highway to the Exxon part of the Krogers. This was where you all were reimagining those, those spaces. And so the city only owned, was it Mickey Drive? Cause I asked about the affordable housing, which you just said, multifamily housing. But we had a discussion that unless it was created in that space, right? Am I not remembering? I don't know which the dates, I have to go back, but is that?
Those were the meetings and I just, just, it's kind of somatic. Some, I wouldn't say the city owns any of the property, it's within the city's jurisdiction around that intersection. And Albemarle County is the quadrant with Stonefield. All other three quadrants are within the city of Charlottesville's jurisdiction. But, but this is the project that we submitted, the three applications that included roundabouts at Whole Foods and at Stonefield, taking hydraulic underneath Route 29 and then connecting Hillsdale all the way to the US 250 bypass and creating bridges over 29 at both Angus and Zan.
So the thousand units that you said, multifamily housing, where, where are they gonna go?
Well, it doesn't, all, all the thousand units is, of the 600-acre study area, there is 100 acres of that that is paved surface parking. And on 100 acres of land, you could build up to 1,000 multifamily residential units. There, there is no designation as to where they would go, it's just a, a space capacity.
Mayor Walker, may I interject something here? Because this shows where zoning is really important. The current zoning in this area that we're talking about, which is the old Seminole Trail area, does not allow multifamily housing by right. It's by special use permit. What's allowed by right is commercial. What the zoning changes that are proposed in this Small Area Plan is that we would make residential areas by right, a range of residential types, and that it would be in keeping with a block network, as, as Mr. Boils was saying, that would keep the scale of the buildings within a kind of a livable form, but also promote a multimodal approach, walking, biking, buses and cars. So earlier on this evening, Ms. Ashley Davies has talked about how some roads are arterials and some roads are residential or local street scale. That's absolutely true, but all of them are multimodal by our policy. All of them are supposed to take care of all uses. But you can't get any housing in this area without changing the zoning. And this vision plan has a zoning approach.
So the zoning changes, the current landowners would have to abide by future zoning changes before building?
Correct.
Or they could keep as.
As a non-conforming.
As is before the zoning. Okay.
They get to a certain point in the process and they, then it's a green light for them. Like, once like, certain plans are approved, I thought, the zoning doesn't precede that. And there's a, there's a point in time where they, they can move forward regardless. I'm not sure, I'm not remembering what hurdle is, but I thought it was through some site plan approval process.
Okay, well, and that's about specific projects?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, specific projects, yes, there are rights that would attach to your development rights once a site plan has been permitted. That's, or there's a determination by a zoning administrator. Those are called vested rights under Virginia law. But, but in this particular matter, this is, this is purely a zoning text amendment, which is just purely a change to your zoning code for a zoning district, whether to allow or allow a use by special use permit. And that's, that, there are no vested rights that are attached to a zoning code. The vested rights attached to specific properties, if you get, say, a site plan approved or rezoning or a special use permit. But just amending your zoning code and the zoning code itself does not confer any vested right.
So which, which proposal did you all submit the application for? And, cause I don't remember, if that had been decided by that meeting? And what's the timeframe for that?
And we'll certainly answer that, but it's very separate from the land use issue, issues. The MPO submitted, make sure I'm, I'm separate. Two, we actually submitted three proposals. One would be funding applications to the state. One would be to construct the two roundabouts at Whole Foods and at Stonefield along Hydraulic and then to take Hydraulic under Route 29. We also requested the funding to take Hillsdale all the way across from where it is now at Whole Foods, all the way to the US 250 bypass and construct the two crossovers at Zan and Angus. And then we submitted a third package of all of it. The same thing. We will know by July 1st of this coming summer of if any or all of those packages were funded. Then there's a six-year process to actually do the design and construction from that point forward. And I'll be very upfront with it. I mean, these were big ass. These were in the range of 150, 70 million dollars. So I'm not, I don't want to come across as it's just a given that these will be funded. There are a lot, there's usually about 10 times more projects requested than there is available money.
So I have a question for you, Counselor Galvin. So in a situation like this, if we deny the request, they are, there's still a plan already in place and they're gonna build it. How does that fit into the long-term?
So when you say there, you're talking about the applicant?
The applicant, yeah. So they still own the land, they can still do what within?
But they couldn't do it if we didn't grant the special use permit.
But they can do something, right? That may not be aligned with the current vision that this year-and-a-half process.
Yes.
Put in place.
And then, we also heard that this highway corridor is actually located in two other parts of the city.
And that I heard.
And, and it was interesting to hear some advocates talk about how they wanted to make sure that it wasn't happening in some, but not all of the areas. And in fact, thought that you could break apart the US 29 plan to make so, make sure that the other two highway corridor areas didn't get drive-through traffic. And my argument has been, but it's been the hydraulic Hillsdale area that has the blueprint for a new kind of place under a small area plan that's now appended to our comp plan. It is the one that has the vision for a new zoning regimen. It, so it's the one that should have the most protection and the one that has the most, if you're gonna make any zoning changes, it should be zoning changes to further that vision, not to go the other direction. So that's the, the, why I, I did push back a little bit in that argument that the other two areas were the ones that needed to be protected. This is the one that has the protection. It has the community vision, a year-and-a-half, you know, in process. And, and, so it, and I, and I do see the Health Department representatives here, if, if we could just have them at least be, I just feel terrible that they waited this long and they.
So just a quick question, so we could pull out the other two areas or no? No?
I don't, I mean, I think that's the Planning Commission call, I don't, but I don't think that's our call.
No, I'm just asking, I don't know.
Well, I, I guess, in effect, what, what you're, what the request would be in effect is, there's currently the highway corridor zoning that applies to these three areas. And, and in effect, you could either have a, a process, I think that you'd have to look at your comp plan as well as your zoning ordinance and in fact, create a new zoning district, in effect, for perhaps the hydraulic area and then highway corridor would remain for Monticello and what's?
Fifth Street.
Fifth Street.
Cause that's where I'm, I'm just, I just really struggle that these areas are all considered highway corridor the same. As a person who travels across all of them, often, they're just very different to me. And I, I certainly, I hear the work that's been done, but I just struggle when I see all the precedents out there and just knowing what's coming down 29. As a mother of, you know, young children, when there are places I wanna be able to go that I don't have to get out of my car to take care of certain business. And I know that there's gonna be some, speaking to the types of businesses that these are, but heck, if, if there was a Boto's out in 29, I'd be the first one to say, please give me that drive-up so that I can take my kids to get Boto's. And I don't consider that to be this horrible place to go get food. And it's fast and it's convenient. And so I just, I'm just struggling because I do, I do hear from the neighborhoods that are also rolled into this, that they don't want this. And I don't want there to be any risk of those neighborhoods getting hurt in that way. Like, that's, that's a risk, I'm just starting to feel like I don't even know that I wanna take. But I, and I hear where you're coming from, the hydraulic side, I just. I just, I just feel like, I'm a visionary too. I just think we're really a long way from that, and...
You've gotta begin somewhere.
I know, I know.
I mean, the balance, well, well, are we, I guess, have we moved into the discussion portion? Yeah, we can have them come and speak.
And after they finish, Mr. Boils, I'd love to ask you a couple more questions, if that is okay with Mayor Walker. I'm about to lose a bet that we were gonna be out by eleven.
Yeah, better, better unders.
I owe Vice Mayor Hill twenty push-ups.
Always, always spiking the football too early.
Well, good evening. Uh, my name's Rebecca Schmidt, and I'm with the Thomas Jefferson Health District, which includes the Admiral Charlottesville Health Department. Um, I'm here with Dr. Denise Bonds, our health director. And we were asked to speak to the implications of this zoning decision on public health, specifically any implications on obesity. Uh, the most effective public health interventions make changes to policy systems and environments that make the healthy choice the easy choice. Build environment is critical, uh, for public health, and public policy tools such as zoning can both increase access to affordable and healthy foods and decrease access to unhealthy foods. Uh, when we look at obesity, it is both a public health issue and a health equity issue. In Charlottesville, forty-nine point nine percent of adults are overweight or obese. But when we look at white versus black fifth graders, twenty-nine percent of white fifth graders versus forty-three percent of black fifth graders were overweight or obese, given our most recent data. Individuals who are obese are at increased risk for type-two diabetes, heart disease, some forms of cancer, dementia, and dementia, and a number of other health concerns. The pathways that have been associated with increasing levels of obesity in the United States include increased portion sizes, changes in the types of calories consumed, that is, too many simple carbohydrates that can cause hunger to spike, lack of exercise due to a number of factors, including changing job types, screen time, safety concerns like lack of lighting and sidewalks, and lack of opportunity due to affordability and availability of recreation facilities. Um, there have been, uh, some arguments that would support fast food restaurants, including the fact, um, that they have begun to, uh, begun to offer healthier options, and as of May of this year, are required to offer menu labeling, if they are part of a chain of twenty stores or more, twenty restaurants or more, excuse me. Fast food restaurants also do provide more, both more affordable and by definition, fast food choices than other restaurants. However, there are significant public health concerns. These types of restaurants also often offer beneficial pricing and deals for larger portion sizes, and coupons for meals are not required to include caloric or nutrition information. The menu items available in many fast food restaurants, including soft drinks and foods like french fries that are high in fat or sugar, do have clear associations with increased caloric intake and body weight. Fast food marketing has also been found to target communities of color, especially youth, who are particularly vulnerable to advertising. Frequent consumption of food from fast food chains may contribute to cardiovascular disease, type-two diabetes, and obesity. However, more studies are needed on those specific pathways. And finally, if we're looking at, uh, models for more affordable, healthy food, there are many models out there that are not fast food restaurants. Um, some considerations around the zoning specifically. County Health Rankings is a national database of evidence-based policies and programs for public health. And it recommends zoning regulations that limit fast food outlets to improve the food environment and encourage healthy eating at the level of expert opinion. This means that it is likely to be effective, but more evidence is still needed. In several studies, fast food outlet density has not been associated with overweight and obesity, and availability of fast food resi- uh, restaurants has not been associated with consumption, frequency, or body mass index. However, available evidence suggests that proximity to schools is associated with increased fast food purchases and obesity rates among adolescents. Additionally, in some studies, living in areas with many fast food outlets has been associated with higher BMI and greater fast food consumption, especially among low-income individuals and adolescent males. Specifically, when we look at these three zones, Walter, Clark, and Jackson Via are all within less than a mile of these zones. So, that's something for council to consider. Um, in summary, there are, um, several public health considerations, including, um, that there are no discernible public health benefits. Uh, we have seen significant links between obesity, food insecurity, and health equity. And we have worked with city staff on a memo that we hope to share at a future meeting to discuss system approaches around food equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
So...
So, I have a que- yeah? I have a question. How, uh, I guess it's from Mr. Boils and Ms. Galvin as well, or from whomever.
Yeah, come on, Mr. Boils. Can I ask a question before this about, so, one of the, um, all of this, the information you shared is important, and we've talked, you know, hopefully will, um, work on the resolution. But, you know, Whole Foods is right in this area, and if you go there, there's not a lot of, and I know I keep bringing up, like, just separate issues, but I think that it, the, the way that this is being presented, as if this is writing people who are not in the equation into it, is what is also a challenge for me. Because if you go there, it's not very diverse. They have food options and healthier options or whatever, and people can't afford it. And they are not, um, in the, um, you know, in the space. And so, I know that it's a separate, but I'm just, just the way that this is being, um, presented, I also don't think that would, that this is gonna be a fast food restaurant with like a dollar menu. And so, as typical, like, uh, the Starbucks just further up the road, you don't often see, I used to take, uh, my kids to music and art. It wasn't very diverse attendance, um, there, you know, there either. So, I just, that's one of the things that I've been having trouble with, even though I received some clarification tonight. It's just that it's, it's being presented as if this will create an environment where, um, all people will be welcome, and maybe that's the future that we will have. But it's, even in the spaces that currently occupy, um, areas in close proximity, that is not the case. So, that's just one of, one of my challenges with, um, the conversations that, that we've been having.
So, I wonder, to that point, is there a happy median of sorts in which the residents, because, uh, one of the things that's been, um, just very powerful for me is hearing so many residents speak out about how they do not want this in their neighborhood. And we hear that for a variety of different reasons, but, um...
But that was the other two areas.
Right, the other two areas, right. But even hearing Mr. Boils, um, talk about how this land, I mean, essentially, it's enough to build a thousand or four thousand units. Good.
The city doesn't own that property, one. It really doesn't, it's not an option.
I understand that.
Weren't you in the meeting with me?
I was in the meeting with you.
Okay.
But the, the point that I'm making is, is understand that we don't own that land, one. But is there a way for us to work something out, to find a solution amongst all the things that are on the table? Is that just not an option, or?
May, may I?
Sure.
Make a response? Um, I think this is a really good conversation, because I think it's pointing out to the future of land decisions that we're gonna have to make. Because all the land that we have left in this city is about redevelopment. There are no greenfield spaces. It's all these large lots, old obsolete buildings in some cases, and we're gonna have to get aggressive in redeveloping them if we're talking about the kind and numbers of units that we need to produce. And it means getting vision plans, getting zoning changes, and then making it really attractive to get it redeveloped. So, in, in my view here, right now, are we gonna spend staff time and resources to do a zoning text amendment, to change the zoning, to, to make this go towards a more autocentric approach? Or are we gonna move it forward so that it can become much more of a habitable, habitable place with different kinds of uses and buildings in it? And so, I think we're trying to make a neighborhood. We're trying to make a place so we can put more people living there. And, and you can't, you can't have it both ways.
So, is, is it your opinion, or from your perspective, if we move forward, this allows us to be able to, uh, attract developers for us to redevelop this? I mean, help me understand.
You gotta set the table. And one way to do it is to change your zoning so that different kinds of uses can take place.
Can I, can I add a thought in this, which is, I, I think this is a, it's a really important conversation too, that's just sort of happening on this project. We've got a lot more coming up, I think, about how, what are we doing with zoning and comprehensive plan? And I have a, I voted for, um, I voted how I did the last time. Where I, so I'm remembering back two years ago when we voted, we had a couple of divided votes about the car wash and then the Zaxby's. Remember? And we had sort of this debate, and it was very difficult. We had divided votes. And I just went to the Zaxby's for the first time last weekend, and I remember our, our debate about it. And, um, and I remember like, crystal clear, everything, Councilor Galvin, that you talked about, which was very similar to these misgivings. It's, it's closer in that corridor. But, so what you were saying is this is not, we want a more dense lifestyle-connected development there that really would help build those, build that into a community that would be more bike-friendly, that would be healthier, and that would be that more, more tax revenue for the city to have more affordable housing. Whereas now, it's a fast food restaurant where every item, and I enjoyed my meal, and I remember, but it was, every item in there was like, nine or, I, I all respect the Zaxby's. I liked, the people were great. But, but I, but I think that I'm like replaying that in my head now, because it's a small city with this affordable housing debate. We've had this, this is a big conversation, this whole idea about a fifty million dollar. Like, I was running the numbers here. If, if you, if you were to spend fifty million dollars outright on the city developing property, and each unit was two hundred thousand dollars, that's gonna get you two hundred and fifty units. And we've been told that we need several thousand, we're a city of fifty thousand people. So, what, where you're gonna get affordable housing is by setting the rules and having other people do it, and getting some leverage through some funds that you spend, maybe here or there. But you're not gonna do it outright, because it's gonna be billions. Billion, yeah, but it's gonna be billions and billions of dollars. You're setting the rules, you're working with partners like we did with Carlton Views, you're, you're doing seed funding, you're spending wisely, you're getting leverage. So, it's not, and you're using property like you're talking about. I mean, it's a ten-square-mile city, there's not, and our housing study said we need to increase supply in all spectrum. We have to, or else it's gonna keep on getting
I have a question for you.
More expensive. So, I, I'm hearing this in a different light, and I, and I appreciate connecting the dots here a, a lot. And, um, anyway, that's what I wanted to say.
But the question I have for you, Mr. Signer, um, that goes along with, I think, Mayor Walker's point, as I'm just processing it, is how do we know that if we move forward with approving this measure that the people who we know need to be impacted the most are gonna benefit?
We're not approving anything.
Or not, um, we're moving forward.
If you're approving this SUP,
Right.
you are then saying that you're allowing fast food restaurants with drive-throughs. You're giving it up. You're not even, you're not even trying to change the paradigm.
Whereas what I, whereas what I heard, um, however we all end up there in this group of five people, what I, what I loved about what Mr. Murphy said in terms of his vision for the city was it really was very compelling in terms of, so if we're hiring the right people, and we're doing the comp plan the right way, and we really are putting equity into the heart, like, you know, practicing what we're preaching. It, it, you know, and trying to build these areas in different ways, as opposed to just saying, look, this is autocentric, it's hydraulic, who cares? It's, it's kind of is what it is. It's elite autocentric, like, what is the status quo? But it's, it's a small city, and we do want these areas to, to serve our values better. And that is what zoning can do. And we've, we've seen, we've seen this play out a couple of times, because right now on that, like, I played a role in approving the, the car wash and the Zaxby's. It's a fine place, but it's not, it's not putting our city in any direction that's, that's much better for all the stuff that we've been talking about.
But we, so, my question to this, um, is we were having these conversations, and they've been happening even before we were on council, but we have approved two developments, not in these corridors, but that don't fit, that we understand. So, that's another thing that I'm having a hard time with, is why do you all understand the importance of that now, but you didn't understand it in a situation, you know, like the Monticello Dairy Project or, um, the West Second Project? So, I'm just...
Speaking for myself, it was for all the different reasons that I explained when I made those votes. And I did not see there being value to scrapping everything, going from scratch. I didn't see the same leverage. I mean, to me, we've had very charged conversations about perceptions of leverage, like, when, with UVA, when, when there was a discussion about just scrapping things with UVA to scratch, and just, you know, when we were doing Brandon Avenue. I think, and my view is that
That wasn't...
But, but you, but you have the maximum leverage at the beginning. And, and if we're talking here about having the beginning, that's different from legacy projects, where there's several years that go back. That, that's just how I would, how I would answer that. I think it's a good question, but that's how I'd answer it.
And the, and the special use permits that were applicable to West Second Street and the Dairy Road Project were directly tied to residential units and density. They were incentives to the den- the developer to give money into the housing fund or to build the units. And in both cases, they actually built affordable units. The SUP in this case is not gonna give one dollar to the housing fund or build one unit of housing. It is purely a commercial project. So, and it's a new special use permit. Not, those other projects were operating under a zoning regulation that already had a special use permit that was tied to the creation of affordable housing, either through a donation or through building it. So, in that sense, those projects with the zoning that we currently have, they were at least doing that.
So, what is the, um, potential, um, from finance, tax, the revenue contribution? Because that's a, that's a conversation that we have with every project from this project.
How much revenue would it generate, would this project generate?
Again, we're changing a zoning here. This is not a particular project.
Right.
So, we don't have anything, we don't even know what this does.
So, we don't have that information yet, is what you're saying?
Because there's no project. It's just a zoning change.
But they do have a plan to create, uh, businesses in this area. Do we have information about?
This is a zoning. We don't have information in terms of revenues that will come out as a result of the project. However, we can, uh, check with the tax, tax assessors office or economic development department. Uh, they can generate, uh, uh, a po- potential estimate of the revenues that will come out of, of that. If, um, the applicant can provide, uh, some kind of, um, uh, the use that will go into the building, at this point, we don't know the use that will go into the building. And so, we're not gonna be able to, um, to, uh, uh, estimate, uh, or project, uh, the amount of revenue that will be coming out of, uh, the, um, the development.
This was the plan where there was seating outside, that you all were talking about, what to do with the back spaces, opening the walls up, was this?
We run the numbers. I don't have them in front of me, but it's, you know, several million dollars a year in revenues to the city.
Is that a, in terms of revenue, is that a, um, sales tax or property tax or what?
It's a combination.
If, if it isn't a matter of looking at tax revenue to the city, and I could get information from council if you'd like, but on a per-acre basis, doing a mixed income, compact redevelopment generates more revenue per acre than a, a suburban retail model where it's one single-use-type building on hundreds of acres of asphalt. So, I, and that, that is a number calculation that I did use on, on my colleagues during the Zaxby conversation and the car wash. And I did not bring those numbers with me tonight. But there is a different, different kind of revenue stream that you get when you do more compact development. And that's, that's just the math. And they're talking, in the small area plan vision, they're talking about story, four-to-five-story buildings, three-to-five-story buildings, uh, which is very much in keeping with what our neighborhood housing assessment said is viable, to be able to build affordable housing within it. So, I, I think, you know, it's, again, you, this is a blueprint, that we already have it. We don't have small area plans over... We don't have small area plans over other underutilized areas of the city. This is giving us a direction. The direction is not what's being asked for in this case. And that's all I'm just saying that this, we, we're trying to do the right thing, taking the right steps, moving in a direction to shift, the direction of the ship. And, and this will be completely, in many ways, ignoring the plan. And then one, one has to ask, why do we do the planning?
I hear you.
Can I, can I have one, I'm interested, my colleague, so, um, Council Galvin know way, way, way more about this than I do, but I, I do know from some past research that sometimes these enclaves can end up doing what you all are talking about. When, when you, I think when you were alluding to Whole Foods, they can end up making it even more elite, like these new urbanist enclaves. This happened where I'm from in Arlington. They put in a Whole Food, and a Barnes and Noble and it kind of cheesecake factory, the whole, and there was a residential and it, right where I, near where I grew up. And all of a sudden it was like housing prices doubled, everything was about the same. But there are other developments where they're not like that, where they get, where they get very diverse and they're intentionally planned and you really do have mixes of incomes and you, you don't homogenize it. I, it would kill me if we ended up in that direction. That would be the worst outcome.
We need to be able to grab some of that in land.
So, so it would need to be, it would need to be zoned the right way so that you direct it so that it doesn't become this, you know, but, but the point is if the alternative is just, is, is having Starbucks is, it's not like it's that much more, you know, next to Whole Foods, it's not like it's the, you know, this incredibly diverse thing that is the status quo that we're protecting against. I, I just think that it could, I, I, I hear the concern, but there, it, there, there, there are ways to plan to try and make this, I, I hadn't really, you and I haven't talked about this, so this is, this, I'm coming at this new. I'm just, it, I had already been rethinking this, um, coming in here and it's, I think it's a pretty powerful set of issues to reconsider and I really appreciate the people speaking about it.
But it is also why we have a redevelopment manager on board, is to actually implement our small area plans. Is to, is to get the work moving to, and, and it's going to, what we're learning from the, uh, the Partners for Economics, uh, solutions too. This government may very well be much more active in building the roads and the infrastructure to get the, drive the cost of development down. And then you can have opportunities to use your land bank, once that's up and running, to buy the parcels so that they can then flip it to a nonprofit to build the, the more high, um, the high, uh, volume affordable housing. But right now, there's no way to do that. Given that 600 acres of land, the way it's used now, no way.
So you're essentially against the SUP?
I don't, zoning text.
The zoning text.
The zoning text amendment. And I'm all for zoning change, but the, and this, this is particular case is just.
Right. And if we go against this one, your thought is what will happen after this?
I, that is a good question. I was, I would really hope and wonder why we're not having staff come before us with their, with their strategy to implement the hydraulic small area plan, which includes zoning changes and it's a whole different direction. Instead, we got a zoning text amendment to put in a drive-through restaurant. This is not what, I mean, I, and this is, it is challenging to staff, but this is what these small area plans do. They require major changes.
And Mr. Kefon, do you, is, do you have a response to that? Is that possible?
The plan was just, uh, adopted by the city council and secondly, uh, we are completing the comprehensive plan. And, uh, uh, once we finish the comprehensive plan, then we do a wholesale zoning rewrite.
Right.
Which will include the hydraulic. However, uh, the other way to look at it is if council appropriates money, maybe we can hire a consultant to do it. Uh, maybe a farm-based code, space fix to a hydraulic area. So those are the two options.
And is, in your position or your belief that the, um, zoning text amendment can be approved and we can still achieve the goal that Ms. Galvin was talking about?
Well, once you approve the zoning text amendment, basically sets a precedent and it will be working against, uh, um, the plan that is already adopted.
So the precedent needs to be set, okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood both perspectives, as well as thinking about what the neighborhoods, neighborhoods been saying. Okay, thank you. Well, I didn't know if y'all had a question. And you believe the same, Mr. Bowles?
I don't get into your end war teams quite to that level. I do think that the, the concern is that a precedent would be and an investment would be made.
I do believe that an investment would be made along with the precedent that, that would establish you've got a, what would be a conforming business that would be there for the duration, you know, 20 years or 30 years, which may work against the quicker development of the plan as the, the, the hydraulic, small area plan.
Excuse me. Okay. And Mayor Walker, your position, you're stating that, if I'm understanding you clearly, that well, can you, I don't think I am understanding you clearly, cause I, what, what stuck in my mind from what you said is why didn't we think about this for the other ones that I'm.
No, that was just, I'm just saying, I'm hearing different conversation based on the project. I'm just, I would like to just have consistent, um, comments across the board when we, or what I feel like is con, consistent. And I mean, this project, I don't, I don't think that it's, and as I've stated, going to serve the best interest of the community, what's being proposed, what I've seen. But I also don't think that the way that I'm hearing it is, um, that the way that it's being presented for why we shouldn't vote on it is also like the, the obesity, who goes to drive-throughs, um, I mean, the last conversation that we had, it was about elderly, you know, members of the community being able to get there. I, I, I mean, if, I'm just looking at the surrounding areas and what's being created there, like across the street at Stonefield. And if you go there, there is not much. So I'm always thinking in terms of like the equity lens and I think that's what, what I'm looking at this through the, this.
So are you in favor of the zoning text amendment or you're not?
What I got stuck on in the conversation that I had earlier, and I think what I've been saying is that in the past, when we were talking about developments, we've been told that we cannot tell developers what they are going to do with the property. And in this case, it seems like that that's what we're doing. We're telling, and I found the small area plans I'm looking at who was even.
But they haven't, it's not, it's a zoning change. They don't, they don't have the right, they don't have an entitlement to this. We're, we're setting the policy for it.
No, I get, I get that, but we know that they have intentions and what we're saying is what those intentions are, we do not fit into what has been.
The community vision, right.
Plan. But this community vision, Kathy, are these the people who came up with the vision?
There were, we went out to the Meadows, we went on Mickey Drive. There are a lot of people that were involved. That picture doesn't capture it all.
Okay.
And many, many people on Mickey Drive are, are very dependent on walking. And so much of what we were doing in terms of the road infrastructure, as well as the layout, was to make sure that they could walk everywhere that they needed to go.
And is this where Kmart is? That, is that right there?
Kmart is actually down lower, I think.
Where?
So this Mickey, Kmart's right there.
And this red. So in this space, it has clustered retail and commercial.
And all of it's crosshatched so that it could have residential over it.
But that's not here.
And, and that color code it is. That's what is proposing.
It's, it's all in the red with this arrow, right? So this says residential focus.
Yeah, that's the orange. And then this has a clustered retail commercial. And if I'm remembering it, we were allowing residential in everything.
Can't nobody see what y'all looking at?
I think, I think it's called a commercial mixed use.
I'm looking at the, um, it was on our agenda for March, in March 2018.
Right.
The second meeting, so I'm just looking at the, what the conceptual land use plan looks like. I went back and found that. And so there isn't even housing in this, this area. That's what, um, what my question.
It's a zoning designation that allows residential in it, but because it was closer to the big infrastructure of 29, it was viewed that that was also the place that would have more commercial and workspace in it. And as you got closer to the, the Meadow Creek and the, and the, um, the edge with its, with the water feature, it would become more residential.
Did you have something else?
No, I was just sharing this other map. This is just our GIS layer, so you can see that this is a nine acre parcel.
Would it be, um, Madam Mayor to try and put a, a timeframe on how much longer we'll, we'll talk about this?
Yeah, I mean.
Whatever, I mean, it's in your control, but ten or.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to ask.
It's not about you, it's about all of us.
Yeah, the questions about, yeah.
Should think about how much longer we'll.
All right. So.
I just, I've heard a lot of talk tonight over whether or not we're going to allow fast food restaurants and I'm, and what I'm hearing is fast food in the terms of McDonald's. And I just want to go back to what I said previously is that fast food restaurants are a by right in every single mixed use district in the city. We're also not debating whether or not drive-throughs can be on this property because any other commercial use in the city can legally have a drive-through window. It is only restaurants that call out this specific drive-through window, even though fast food defines itself as having a window by which you can order food as in that by right use. And thirdly, I just want to say that, you know, the plans are in place for this redevelopment of the property and it has the phase two that I think is very much in keeping with, A, what you said about this is a mix of commercial uses and we will be defining the hydraulic frontage with a more urban frontage and creating that space and filling in the parking lot as requested. So some of that parking lot will be going away. It will be a new space. So I just wanted to make those three points of clarification because I think there's been a lot of stuff thrown around tonight that hasn't been exactly correct on the topic. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so.
Ms. Hill?
Why?
You didn't have anything to add? Nah, cause you're the only one didn't talk.
No, I've been talking, I don't know. I'm just, I'm struggling because for me, I just can't get over just the other areas of the city that this impacts and, um, I just don't see myself wanting to have staff do the work of having to separate that out and go through that when I know all the work that we have. We really want to get done as the overall zoning rewrite. And I also certainly am hearing the, the discussion that's taking place. I certainly am one who's been a proponent to allowing this. I think I've, I've expressed why and, um, I, I think it is, there's a lot of precedence out there as to why this makes sense, but it, it just comes with so many other concerns, um, all part of this kind of bag that it's just, it's not something we can just isolate out on its own and that's where I'm just, I'm just struggling. And I'm, I'm saying that as someone who certainly, um, was a, a, a very big supporter of, of us going in this direction and, and evaluating this for this part of, part of 29. So I'm just, I'm just struggling with that, but I'm recognizing the points that are made and I really appreciate the communication and the, the discussion among my colleagues. It's, it's, I think we've all kind of learned a lot from it and having the other folks here to chime in, so.
Okay, um, so the motion was, the original motion was, I don't, was there, what was the motion, Ms. Rice?
You have two motions. You know, you can make a motion to deny or a motion to approve.
But there's already a motion.
This was pulled from consent, right? So it was on track at the previous meeting to be, to overturn the planning commission decision.
For, to allow it.
To allow the ZTA, right? And so, and so, you know, right now, I think that you'd either have to remove, you know, pull, pull that, somebody have to pull that motion or you'd have to uh, vote against it and then see where you are.
Mr. Blair, if, if there's a motion in a second that we were doing needlessly for all these years, do we actually, do we actually need to do anything?
Well, I think since there was a motion that was already on the floor, whoever made the motion.
There was no vote, it was just a second.
Right. But, but there still would need to be some action taken on the motion that's already on.
Okay, so we need to.
No, well, was a motion to, in favor of it.
To approve the attached resolution granting the ZTA. So that's what's on the floor now.
On the floor. And so now.
So is there a vote?
Once debate's over, yes, you can call for a vote on the motion that's on the floor.
Okay, so we can call for a vote.
Okay, so we are voting to approve.
The zoning text.
The zoning text to allow the drive-through.
By special use permit at restaurants.
On hydraulic. And we are saying, well, in the three.
Within the entire highway corridor district.
So, and there's no way to pull out just hydraulic from the other two?
Not without rewriting both the zoning ordinance. Right, but, but I did want to add that, that to pull it out would require rewriting the zoning tech, the zoning ordinance and redoing your zoning map. One thing that, that Ms. Davies mentioned, I was going to mention is what, what this really does is it permits this use by special use permit. So it's not as if, if you pass this zoning text amendment tonight, that all of a sudden a drive-through window is automatically going to occur in your highway corridor districts. Would the applicant would still have to apply for a special use permit to have a window for a drive-through restaurant and come back before you.
And that would go back through planning commission.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right.
That's a new wrinkle. I didn't know that you still have to go through.
They would.
Okay, I'm ready.
All right. All right, so we're voting to approve the motion that was.
Right.
Okay. All right, please vote. So that carries three to two.
Okay. I changed my mind.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, no. Too bad. Yeah, it's really does.
So next we have the, um, Monticello Road Traffic Reversal Pilot Report.
Thank you for coming. Thank you, sorry. That was really something.
Madam Mayor, Councilors, I just want to thank you for, uh, getting us, getting me here before, uh, 1:00 AM this week instead of. So I'll give you a little bit of background on this project. I think most of you have, have heard it in, in some aspect already. Um, but during the design for the Belmont Bridge, it was determined that the final design would eliminate left turns at Grave Street onto Ninth Street. Um, this would force vehicles wanting to make the southbound movement to either drive through the access system along the east side of the bridge, proceed under the bridge to Avon, South Street, Sixth Street, Levy Street to the light, or drive through the Belmont neighborhood on Grave Street to Goodman Street, back to Monticello Street, passing approximately 63 residences. As neither of these proposed routes provide an easy route, traffic engineering myself proposed the idea of reversing the flow of Monticello Road, which is currently a one-way, uh, road for one block. This would shorten the detour from .36 miles and .41 miles respectively to .13 miles. This new route would still pass some residences along Monticello and Levy, but the number is reduced to 15. All of these options take vehicles. the number is reduced to fifteen. All of these options take vehicles to the intersection of Ninth and Levy at the traffic signal. Um, so, since the last time I had presented to you, we've, we've presented this at, I think at least two Belmont, um, public meetings. It's, I've gone before the Belmont Carlton Neighborhood Association and presented this. Um, so far, I have received a negative or hesitant at best, uh, response to, to this idea from those neighbors who are directly, um, impacted, and by directly, I mean those, you know, in this one block of Monticello, and those, um, on Levy, which a lot of this traffic is going to be diverted to. Um, so, my proposal still stands. Um, I'd like to, I guess, do this as a two-part pilot, instead of just a, a six-month. Um, really, the concerns of the public that I've heard are twofold. One is, um, just from a, a physical topography standpoint, uh, that if we switch the direction of this, you have a, a hairpin turn, and you're going kind of uphill, um, going from Monticello into Levy. So my, my proposed idea would just be, you know, a Saturday, you know, we would re-stripe it, cover some signs, and, and kind of let the neighborhood, um, do this for, for one day, just to see if it's physically possible. Um, all the computer models say that it is, but, um, I, people just don't trust that, and they, they, they see it, and they, they just don't, don't think it's viable. Um, so that would be kind of my first step, would be to do this and show them that either yes, it is, or, you know, the computer models have proved wrong, and, you know, it's not, and we, we stop there. Um, but, but the alternative, you know, if, if everyone sees that that works, um, you know, we'd, we'd proceed with a six-month trial, and, um, we've got before traffic counts that we did, uh, I think it was back in May. And so we would, you know, kind of do a before and after. We'd present that to everybody again. Um, we'd make another report to council. Um, you know, the, the other, the, the secondary thing that I hope to prove of that is, a lot of the concerns are those of Levy Avenue. Um, the, the traffic on Levy now is significantly lower than it is on Monticello. Monticello is definitely used as a cut-through for probably both the neighborhood and commuters. Um, there was eight hundred vehicles a day that are, are using that. A, a normal two-way street, neighborhood street is only going to be three to four hundred vehicles, so we're, you know, upwards of four times the, the amount of vehicles that a normal, um, two-way street would, would have. Um, Levy Avenue, Two Way Street had, you know, three-hundred-and-eighty, three-hundred-and-ninety vehicles, um, a day that were on that. So, um, I think that by switching the direction of this, you know, we will reduce the number of cut-through traffic, because instead of being able to bypass lights all the way down the corridor, um, from Avon and Monticello, um, and come out on the other side on Graves Street, they'll now have to, you know, exit onto the light. Some people might still do that, um, but I think there will be a drop. So, eh, again, overall, for everyone involved, I think that it would be a net benefit to the community, um, but I want to bring it to you guys, let you guys know, I, I'm proceeding to, to move forward unless you all say different. Um, and I, I do that because I, I don't want the community to come to you and say, hey, we, we told him that we were against this, and he's doing it anyway. Um, so that's, that's kind of the reason why I, I want to do it the way I'm doing it, and, um, that's kind of where I'm at. The, the alternatives to, to not doing this is, you know, the, the left turn remains removed when we do the Belmont Bridge, and we promote either one or both of these other alternative options that would go, you know, the access easement down underneath the bridge, circle back by where Champion Brewery is, and come, come around, um, or they go through the neighborhood. Um, so those are really the only two viable options if we don't do this. So.
I have a question. Could, could we do another pilot, which is to pretend the Belmont Bridge is in place, and you, and you do prevent that left turn, you make everyone do this a pugilist's route, so that people see how bad it can be?
So, so your proposition would be that we do the no-left turns at all, but we would, and we would not do this, so they get to see how bad it is?
Give them two choices, like there's two trials. One trial is your proposal, and then the other trial would be to do it if.
So I think the difficulty with that is the physical construction of the bridge. I mean, right now, even if we sign it, no-left turn, that, there's going to be a lot of people that will still probably try and, and make that left-hand turn, which, you know, we could station police out there to, to enforce that.
No, it's not worth it.
That, that's kind of the reason we wouldn't do that at this point.
And my question was just, um, you've kind of really clear that if the topographic logistics don't work, that it will stop here. Well, we have any option, just to kind of understand that feedback. I think, asking for a day trial, I mean, I think that's not a big deal, but then to make the next step of a six-month trial is a much bigger step, and I would just want to kind of understand the data and the feedback that you've gotten, and I want to know what weekend you're doing it, to go out and actually see kind of in action.
Oh, yeah, and we would definitely put out press release.
Because right now, it just seems like we're, we're approving two phases, and, um, that's, those are two very different things.
No, they, they are.
A day versus six months.
But the, I guess the first one, I think, is very straightforward. Either, either a vehicle can make the turn, or it can't. Um, you know, so, I understand they are very different, but at the same time, there's not, there's not really a lot of feedback. It either works or it doesn't, um, from a, from a physical standpoint, so.
Any other questions?
No, I was in the steering committee. I, I think this was a creative way of trying to avoid the other options that we have here going through the neighborhoods. Um, and obviously, I recognize there's going to be certain neighborhoods that it's going to be a struggle for, but, um, I think the day trial will be really interesting. So, let us know when that happens, if, if we're going forward here.
And, and I really appreciate you bringing it before us, so that we, we aren't all blindsided by the comments from the public, but we also, I think it's important that we engage the public as a partner in this. So, um, yeah, they're going to be mon- monitoring it, and we're all going to be watching it, but, um, I, I also appreciate you trying to do something outside the box a bit, so that's great, too.
Good, thank you.
And the six months, if you, before that time period, like if it was three months, and you had all the information that you may need, would be.
So the reason for the six months is really to let people adjust to it.
Okay.
So, you know, change their driving patterns a little bit, and let it, you know, kind of, cause set before we went out and took new traffic counts one weekend, and people are still trying to, to make that movement, realizing that it takes longer, or whatever else. So, it's really just to kind of let the equilibrium of daily driving settle out, so we get a, you know, a good, good representation.
Okay. But you aren't going to remove the left-hand turn option during these trials?
No.
Okay.
So really, really what we're looking at, I guess, for this is, you know, does it work from a physical standpoint? And, and two, will it actually remove kind of the cut-through traffic, um, coming down Monticello Road? Because if we flip, if we flip the direction, although you won't be able to make the left-hand turn there, most of the people coming down Monticello Road aren't going up and making the left.
Mm-hmm.
Because you'd be coming from the south.
No, no, no.
And then turning, turning around. So, um, you know, this is really the, the majority, and I've got the numbers from that. So when, as part of the Belmont Bridge study, when we did the traffic counts, I mean, you've got, um, a hundred and twenty vehicles in the, the morning peak, at, at the Graves, um, Avon intersection, and a hundred and twenty about in, in the evening peak. Um, and of those hundred and twenty, you have six making the left-hand turn, and eleven, or ten making the left-hand turn. So it's, it's a very small number, actually, making this.
Yeah, okay.
Um, you know, in the peak hour, eh, the general rule of thumb is you would multiply that by ten. So we're, we're talking roughly a hundred, sixty to a hundred vehicles a day that are making this left-hand turn versus a thousand plus that are, are making a right-hand turn. Um, so that's, that's where, where we're at.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Alright. And now we're at, um, is there any other business?
Um, yes, do you mind? So, one thing was, I just, I sent to you all an email, um, proposing that we consider, um, bumping the consent agenda up to immediately after the roll call. Um, so that, understanding that staff, um, are often waiting to find out if we're going to be pulling anything from the consent agenda, and just the number of hours that they are, are waiting. And so, once we get through Community Matters, as was tonight, like, it was like nine o'clock, and the people didn't even know at that point where they'd be pulling them. So, um, I think the two things I propose is putting it forward, and then giving us an opportunity to ask anyone who had already signed up and was secured a spot for public comment, if they were coming to speci- specifically speak to something on the consent agenda. And I think I've talked to a few of you, and I think we all agree it's pretty rare that that happens, but we should at least give that the option, so that we have that in consideration if we were to pull something from the consent agenda. But, um, this is something that came out of, um, I think it was the I-team. This is like some feedback that came through, and a staff member raised this, and it seems like there's broad support for asking council to consider this, um, as a staff request, so that everyone's time can be most efficiently used. So I, I just wanted to kind of get a sense for if that was something of interest. If, if so, I'd love to have a start us doing at the end of the second meeting in September, since we're going to have this break in early September. Is there anything else you would say? No?
Staff would love that.
Okay.
I have no problem with that. I think it's a great idea.
All good?
Great.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
But if we pull items, they go.
Or they still go back. That way people will just know. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, Ms. Rice, you're, that's cool for agendas moving forward. We'll take, change that order.
And then the other questions, if there are individuals who wish to speak, they can speak then. They don't have to wait.
We're going to ask them at the very beginning.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes.
But they have to speak about those items. They can't just.
Yes.
And they have to be signed up already. We're not asking just for anyone open, open mic.
But we don't have people right now to sign up, we don't have like a, a sign-up sheet for the consent agenda.
I think what we're just asking is, when you have, you would just ask, is anyone of those people who have signed up in these sixteen slots has come to speak about the consent agenda? We're going to give you the option to speak now versus waiting until after, so that we have your voices heard before we vote on the consent agenda.
Well, how about after it's read, that I can ask if anyone has, would like to speak on any item?
Yeah.
That was on the consent agenda.
Anyone that's signed up already.
So you're effectively holding like a public hearing on just consent agenda items, and.
Well, I was just.
Allowing people to talk.
If they.
Then, yeah.
Well, we can go that route, or I was just saying, even if there's, I thought we were still, still stick to the number of speakers that we had, and if any of them had come specifically to speak to a consent agenda item, they could do that earlier. I'm not fully flexible either.
Well, I just think, you, since we're moving it, if the, um, you know, people will not have a chance to speak on it until after we voted on it, if they go, if they are in the Community Matters pool. But so I just think, just asking, and like you said, it's rare, so, um.
And I was just saying, we're asking of the people that was, I think the difference is, are we asking of the people that have signed up? Because in today's world, that's all that would have a chance to talk to that anyway. Not just anybody. Because we have sixteen speakers that have gone through that vetting process to sign up. And so I think we would still be asking, of the sixteen people, speakers who have signed up this evening, is there any one of you who was asked, who has come to speak to a consent agenda item? If so, we're going to let you go ahead and speak now, after we've read the consent agenda, before we get into all the other rest of the agenda. And then we will have that many fewer speakers later. But we still have a total of sixteen speakers.
Yeah, and I just think, like, if we could just look at, just asking if there's anyone after it's read, and maybe they hadn't paid attention to it. Um, and if it's something that gets, changes from being a rare thing to a normal, if we will look at it then.
Madam Mayor, I, I hate to interrupt, but, but is the intention to do this at your next September seventeenth meeting? Um, if that's the case, we probably do need to amend the rules of procedure.
Yes.
Because they, they do have, um, the consent agenda after Community Matters.
Okay.
So we need to get that on the agenda and vote on it.
Right, to, to vote on that, to amend your rules of procedure.
Okay.
So can we do it at the start of the meeting, and then follow this process?
I think we have to do it the next meeting, the October.
Okay.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So we can vote on the changes in September.
Yes.
And then in the first meeting in October, we'd have the new rules in place. Yes.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Mr. Blair.
And then we have it to where we'll ask after reading it, if anyone has, okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Rice, you, okay. Alright, any other?
Um, the only other piece was, um, with the civilian review board, if we had kind of consensus on how we wanted to handle those inquiries. Um, I know we've gotten some feedback on those inquiries from staff members, and we've all given, probably given it some thought as well. Um, I guess, my goal would be that we give them feedback via email sooner versus later, and then determine how, how we want to actually sit down with them. Is it during their next scheduled meeting on the twenty-eighth? Do we want to try to find a mutually, I think getting them to schedule a, a critical mass of them is difficult, because there, you know, it's a lot of schedules to kind of coordinate. And so I was just thinking, maybe we would just be there for the first part, if they wanted to have a couple, two, three, four, however many council members there for that next meeting, just to make sure that they don't go through another meeting of uncertainty, and that we can really address all of the questions that they have, and make sure we have enough staff present. So I just wanted to get thoughts from my colleagues on, on that.
I just want, uh, without having gone deep into this, as deep as, I think, I want to, I would very much like to avoid the situation we got into with the hack, where there were, there was one opinion from the hack members, there was another one from staff, and it ended up being a circling madhouse procedurally that went on like three different meetings, where we just ended up, and it wasn't, I don't know what the right solution that was, but it needs to be framed. I remember that we need to have framed for us, and Mr. Belmont, you probably have opinions about this, I mean, like, I just know, it was like, we need framed things that we vote on, like, wh- when, when they come to us as a body. And that, that was what.
With resolutions, or whatever written.
And not sitting here, and, because when staff and a body are at odds, it's like, and putting, it puts us in a terrible position, and it puts the public in an awful position watching it. And it was just, I, I don't know how we get to that with this, but I think that would be the goal, is that.
But we can just go to the meeting, so that we, um, can know exactly what the ask are, even if it's not all of us, that then we are reporting and not necessarily making a decision. Or we can talk about some of those things beforehand. Um, you know, the requests that they've made, I mean, we just talked about the budget. It was, uh, um, they modified the police complaint form and wanted to be able to accept those. Um, so I, I mean, even if the answer is no, like whatever it is, just being clear on, um, or if it's yet, you know, like whatever, instead of, um, them, just kind of, yes. Um, and then what was the, um, third one? Um, and then the, the ninth member, right? Um, that was the other one. So I think those would be, um, those are the ask, and so at some point, we have to answer those. And if it's, uh, in a year with, this mic is doing something. It is, I'm the only one. Um, Wes, um, you know, just, I think, I think they are not, um, they're unclear about what, what they can do. Um, or having met, they have some requests. Because it seems pretty clear that the resolution said create, spend a year creating bylaws, and now there is an attempt to, for some activity, and for them to, um, be able to do some things that I think will impact the outcome of the bylaw, so, um.
Like what Ms. Gay, Gay, this was talking about going on a trip to Northern Virginia to see another in action. Certainly, I totally recommend, or support that, and whatever additional resources they need to do that. Um, and it might help them figure out what some bylaw models would be good for them. I, I.
But even like the com- police complaint form, there's a form that they feel is different than what is currently. There could be the conversation to have it with the police chief, or whether she would even look at those changes and want to modify her form, or whether if they, if more individuals would submit to the CRB than to, but without the bylaws in place, are we able to make those decisions? I mean, I think that's the kind of, um, you know, the kind of answers that we need to ask, be able to give, probably need it legal at the meeting, and have council to just figure some of, some of that out.
And have they, have they elected their own chair?
Not yet.
Not yet. So they, they don't, they don't have their own leadership.
I think Sarah and Dawn, right?
Or have they elect?
No.
I don't think they've elected a chair.
Okay.
They've discussed different leadership options.
Okay.
Right.
So just briefly, it was around. So, just briefly, it was around, what is the process? They can request additional funds, um, then our description around what independence really means, um, the context of independence? And are we giving the autonomy to add another member, um, to the board? And how are decisions about our actions and plans being made? So...
I'm sorry, so are, and bylaws, how does bylaws fit into this?
They're supposed to be writing them.
That's what the original charge for this year was, is supposed to be to, but they are saying to do these things, then they already have some ask or...
It seems like these should be addressed within bylaws. Like, if we could just get it out, if they wanna do that quicker, that's great, you know? Do bylaws quickly and then address these questions within?
But I think so for, the, the ninth member is clearly, um, Jeff Fogle, right? And so, they want to be able to appoint someone that they...
They can't. We...
Well, that's what they're asking.
Yeah, we appoint. They don't have that authority.
So, they are asking to add a ninth member and...
Well, even if they did add a ninth member, council would still have to appoint them.
So, I think that's the kind of that, then that needs to be the discussion, that if there could be a nine-member board, but then council would... And so, if we know that is their intention to appoint someone that we would not support, I think just saying that or saying we would open back the application process and any, you know, one, you know, could apply and we would go through the same process. But, so I think that's what they're looking for, like which, I mean, I think their goal is ultimately, they wanna be able to appoint, right?
Right.
And they can.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we can send that email now then? Right?
Yes, ma'am.
But if, I start teaching next on the twenty-eighth, so I don't know if this is in the evening or the afternoon, so I, I don't know how many councils...
It's an evening.
So, I couldn't, I don't get out of teaching until, until seven.
I don't think we all have to go. I just wanted to make sure that if only a couple of us could go, everyone was comfortable with just a couple of us going. And we obviously have feedback from different...
Yeah, and...
Folks and maybe we'd have, you know, obviously, I think we should have someone from the attorney's office come with us.
Sure.
And did I hear that they wanted some outside legal assistance?
That was part of the question around the fund, funding.
Or just bringing in outside?
They want to be able to do so in the event that they, cause they feel there may be a potential conflict between the city representing both.
Correct.
Which you addressed.
I'm hopeful, hopefully, um, I can speak with Mr. Gaethers. I, I would like to talk to him about that and kind of get an idea of this, I, you know, they have perception there could be a conflict for our office to represent and, and we need to understand where they're coming from with that perception and, and fully vet that out with, with the CRB and see, okay, what, what do you feel is a conflict here? Because you all are aware.
You represent the police and they're trying to hold the police accountable. It's pretty simple.
Well, I, I think part of this, when you look at both Fairfax County and Virginia Beach, um, I know in Virginia Beach, the city attorney's office is designated in their bylaws to represent their IRP.
I've been there like three times to go look at it.
And they...
They, yes. So, again... But that doesn't mean we have to do it.
Right. And I was going to say that, that simply because they do that doesn't mean that the council couldn't look at an arrangement to have outside counsel for the CRB. That, that's certainly within your purview, but I wanna fully understand.
But that could be written in the bylaws.
Right.
Okay.
Budgeted.
Yeah, they need the bylaws and budgeted, right?
Yeah.
Right.
But they want maybe a temporary attorney to help with the process of...
Of writing the bylaws.
Writing the bylaws, which we have to approve, right? So, okay. Alright, so, then I'll, I'll commit to going...
I'm pretty sure I can go.
Yeah, to this, um, to the meeting on the twenty-eighth too. Alright. Is there any other discussions around that? Okay. Any other business? Alright, so the, um, community matters, um, second session, is there anyone who wished to speak? Good, still evening for a few minutes?
Good evening. Name is Joy Johnson. Live at eight oh two eight Hardy Drive. And so, I, um, I'm here tonight to speak about an experience that a resident and I had at the night out, um, with the police officers and in, um, Ex Park. And so, it was an event that I decided, um, to attend, and it was after, it was the Tuesday after the night here at city council meeting. And, um, it was raining, um, and decided that, okay, let's just go and let's just try something different and get acquainted since we know the police chief was gonna be there. And so, when we got, when I got there, um, the other resident hadn't shown up, and I had, um, ran into Councilor, um, Hill, which she was talking to someone and she had her child with her. And I ran into her and I said, "Well, hi, Councilor Hill. Did you survive last night?" And the reaction that I got from Councilor Hill was very, very chilling. And I kinda wondered if, um, well, let me finish. So, what, basically what Councilor Hill said was, "No, I did not." And I didn't get over and the resident sat in that and she dragged her child away and walked away from me as if, you know, I was kind of a monster in front of all those police officers. And I stood there for a minute and the person that she was talking to, they just looked and just shrugged their shoulder like, "I don't know." The resident who was with me didn't actually see what, saw what happened, and I didn't really say anything. I watched you walked away, dragged your child away. I watched you walked away, walked around the, um, park. And I s- I kinda said to myself, "Well, wait a minute. Aren't you an elected official? When you took this job, all of you, you all know that when we stepped to the poll and we voiced our opinion, you just gotta have tough skin." I heard you said that tonight to someone in the audience, "Well, I have a tough skin." As a constituents, I don't care what I sit here and say, to talk, to, to really diss me the way you did in front of all those police officers, and it was noticeable. I even had one officer came over and said, "You okay?" And I said, "I'm fine." The rest of the night, I know my time is up, but I'm gonna finish. The rest of the night, everywhere I turned, I was in your face. You walked over, before you left, you walked over, the, the elderly lady who was sitting beside me, you walked over, you said something to her and said goodbye, and you walked over to the other resident and shook her hand. Finally, she said to the police officer, "This is not a very friendly place." But yet still, you all can't understand, you can't understand what the systemic issues are in this city. We didn't feel comfortable in that surrounding, but you felt very comfortable. And ironically, Tuesday night, when another person was talking about her encounter with you on the mall, she was expressing exactly how I was feeling that day. Now, I'm gonna tell all of you, I ain't gonna, y'all ain't gonna never agree with everything that I stepped to this poll and them say, but when I'm out there, you always got to respect me and always got to respect you. I'm not a monster. I wasn't gonna hurt your child. Even your child walked over and I was playing with her when you had your back turned and wasn't even looking at what I was doing. Shame on you. Shame on you, all because of what I may have said the night before. I am just telling you, a lot of times when somebody's telling you what you have done to impact them, we don't always see it, but I'm just telling you what happened and to hear another woman on Tuesday night at Jefferson express the same feeling that I was expressing, shame on you. You were a councilwoman when you got voted in. This is what you signed up for. I didn't appreciate it, and I wanted you to know that I didn't appreciate it. And if you ever think that you're gonna feel comfortable when police officer's around, no. I wanted you to hear that tonight. That's why I sat back there. I worked tonight, I should've been home with my grandchild. But I wanted you to know that you have no more opportunity to, to ever disrespect me again like that in public, cause I don't disrespect you. I was actually, I was actually that evening, I didn't have to talk to you, I didn't have to speak to you when I saw you again, but I actually was still trying to really say, "Hi, how are you? How many time I lay Mike Murphy out? How many time I would lay Max Signer out? And poor Kathy." But whenever we see each other, we still acknowledge each other.
Thank you.
So, I just wanted to know how you made me fa- felt that night, and I want you to know, you don't get another chance to do that to me.
I'm sorry that that's how you felt that night, but when, when you came up, when you came up to me that evening, acting like nothing had happened the night before, I was still, I, I had not slept that night. How you treated Ms. Galvin was very upsetting to me.
How I treated who?
Ms. Galvin and how you directly...
Did Kathy have a problem with that?
Ms. Galvin.
That's not for you to defend, that's for Kathy to defend.
It was also, but also how I felt like you treated me directly. And you came up to me smiling as if nothing had ever happened.
Exactly. You are a councilwoman and no matter, what I said was, and I still was staying to it, I said I did not trust you because you were tied to Mike Signer's hip. He didn't get upset with me, did he?
But you came, but, but you came up to me as if you wanted to have a friendly conversation, like nothing had happened.
Oh, no!
And I was not in a position to pretend that nothing happened.
So, you ever...
So, I just said, excuse myself. I'm like, no, I said, no, not last night was actually, I said, Ms. Johnson actually, last night, I said, last night was actually a nightmare for me.
You were very rude.
And I did turn around and walk away, and that was the end of it.
Okay.
Prime example. You can't defend what you did. That was for Kathy. If I, if I treated Kathy bad, that was for Kathy. She got my email. She know how to get in touch with me. She passed me on her back. She can al- she can say to me, "Joey, you upset me. It wasn't your business to cha- to chastise me about how I treat Kathy Galvin."
It was how you treated me.
It wasn't your right.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes, wish to speak?
I say this with complete respect and, um, there's a lot I still don't know about it, and you know, I definitely wanna hear more discussion, and I understand I'm not in a position to make a decision, which is very different, but I just have to say I do find the vote on the, um, hydraulic drive, drive-through disappointing and quite frankly, mystifying. I just don't understand how voting against the planning commission to give a giveaway to a massive corporation to build a drive-through advances any kind of vision for this city. And in doing so, we did not increase the possibility of building more housing units or local businesses. In fact, we encouraged more corporations to come in and build drive-throughs. I just don't see with limited land, limited resources, how that pushes us forward. And again, I say that knowing, you know, I don't really know a lot about small area plans. There's definitely, you know, a lot more discussion I wanna hear. But, um, from what I've heard, I do, I feel like small area plans, if they're done right, could potentially be a tool because it seems like, you know, if you did it a right way, you could have, instead of just by right, people deciding what to build most profitable, you could, you know, identify how many affordable housing units you want at different AMI levels. That's if it's done right. But when, the bottom line is just building a big corporate drive-through and undermining that potential tool, um, again, I could totally be wrong and I'd love to hear more, but, um, in the moment, I just find it disappointing, so just wanted to say that, but thank you.
And I think, I mean, I pulled up the small area plan, which is what Kathy came over here to show me what there, even the housing units, and I guess that could change, but there isn't even any residential units. So, I think maybe one step, um, would be looking at that. I mean, I just pulled together information that I've heard in the past, um, eight months from very different sources, and I knew where to go back and look for that, cause I was in a meeting about that. And so, I just think, um, it's, again, it's about, um, trusting the process and hearing consistent messages across, across the board. I don't, and so that, that's what, that's what I shared before.
And Neil Walker, may I say something? Um, and to Mr. Payne's point, um, number one, the hydraulic small area plan calls for affordable housing. It didn't establish, uh, target unit targets. I think some of you, I've sent to all of you memo that, of ideas of the, for consideration for our affordable housing production strategy, that this is a time, now that we know the number of units we need, we could very well be designating targets for our small area plans, um, that, that is something that we as a body need to be moving forward to and creating a whole suite of strategies to tackle this housing problem. And just wanna say, the small area plans are amazingly integral part to that because we are ten square miles, don't have much to, and we can't annex. All there is, is out there is more asphalt, and we gotta figure out a creative way to reuse it. So, I hope we can move forward and not just wholesale, wholesale discard planning efforts because there isn't a specific number designated. That's our job. We gotta designate those numbers now. We've got the data now. So, that's hopefully after August thirtieth, and, and I totally agree with Emily Dreyfus. We get, we get the resources we need to get this thing done by January twenty nineteen. We've gotta get this hard housing strategy done, but I think it's, it's gonna have to be part of the toolkit. And, and, you know, we'll, we'll carry on. But I just wanna make sure that, that I underscored what Mr. Payne was saying.
Thank you. Hi.
I just have a question. Before the council makes any changes to the CRB establishment that you already have, before votes taken, would it be open to public comment or would it not be?
You can go to the CRB meetings, they're open.
No, I mean before council.
It's in the board's hands. They're writing the files right now. That's what they would...
So, I think at this point, we would just be attempting to get some clarification on what this year process would look like.
If you decide that you wanna vote on a ninth member before you vote, I'm just using that as an example, before you vote, would it be open to...
I don't think, at this point, I don't think so.
Thank you.
Is...
Well, if we voted to amend, we already have a vote on this resolution, and we would have to have another public vote to amend it, correct?
Right.
In which case, there'd be opportunity for the public to weigh in.
Right. Well, there's not a public hearing required, but, but I was gonna say that's at the council's discretion.
Okay. Alright. Anyone else wish to speak? Alright. Thank you. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, meet in the journal.